We're here tonight. Ms. Johnson, is all the paperwork in order? Background checks, license, everything in order? I'm going to make a motion and we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nate, it's so passed, you can pick up your... See, in the morning? In the morning. Thank you for your visit.
Thank you all for your service, too.
Just to let you know, this is going, he's taking over the convenience part of Good Time Liquor Store where their beer and sales and stuff are now, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you, appreciate you keeping in there. If not be any other action, your board closing. Did we approve... Oh, I'm sorry, let me back up and... We need to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? My mistake. Approve. Any closing?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
To call to order the public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is for citizens' comments on...
An ordinance, Bill 2014-01, ordinance number 823, to repeal, revise, and remove all reference to annexation of Givens Cut Road from Bill 2013-01, ordinance number 796, and to annex only Overby Road per the original Bill 2013-01, ordinance number 796, and its entire... And its existing county roadway into the city of Fairview, Tennessee. All the proposed roadway for annexation lies within the city of Fairview, Tennessee, growth boundary.
I have a statement from the city attorney. Please convene the public hearing and recess the public hearing to Thursday, May 1st, 2014. This is requested and coincide with the court hearing, which is rescheduled due to the ice storm, to Monday, March 31st, 2014.
Is that a motion?
What are the wishes of the board?
Should we allow anybody to speak if they're here to speak?
No, sir, because what we want to do is, we want to recess it until May the 1st, and it will be read advertised in accordance with the state statute, and they can speak at that time. I apologize for anyone who came out to speak, and I'm sorry we couldn't get there on Monday, but we had no control of the ice storm.
Yeah, I don't think a motion is proper. I think you just recessed the meeting.
Recess the public hearing to the May 1st date.
We will take care of the advertising.
Public hearing closed, thank you.
What does that mean for 7A on the agenda?
It defers. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, March 6th, 2014. Those who would, please join us in the prayer and the pledge. Wayne, would you... Mr. Hall, would you lead us?
Pray with me, please. Most gracious heaven and father, we indeed thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings of life. We thank you for the citizens of this community. Things that we need to discuss tonight, I hope, are in the best interests of all concerned. These things are asked in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I would like to defer 7A, defer to Thursday, May 1st, which is the first Board of Commission meeting in May, requested to coincide with the court hearing that was rescheduled for Monday, March 31st, due to the ice storm. I'd also like to request the deferment of 8I, as it has a revision that was given to us for further review, and that'll be on the next Board of Commission meeting, if approved. I would like to also, in the respect of the Open Meeting Act, I would like to ask for the addition, which would be 8M... To rescind the vote of the interim city manager that was done on secret vote, and to redo it according to the Opens Meeting Act. We have those three changes on the agenda. Would anyone like to add or delete at this time?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to rotate B and C. I'd like to put C, or B is B where C is, if that's possible.
7B and 7C, be changed?
Yes.
Any other additions, deletions, or changes? Yes, sir.
I would need to add, if you don't mind, the E citation.
Under old or new? M N. Discuss and undertake action on E citation bid. Sutton? Any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have a question before we add that to the agenda, to the city attorney. By the mayor saying redo the interim city manager vote, is that what you were...
To correct the procedural errors of the secret vote.
Okay, so...
Valid.
Basically, in essence, we go and just vote who we did for out loud?
Do a roll call, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it... Just want a clarification what you're doing.
So it'll be in the records for the open meetings.
Okay.
Any other additions or deletions this evening? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is citizens' comments. We have Mr. John Cherry. If you would, please approach the podium. Welcome.
Thank you, I'd just like to make everyone aware about the... Is this working? Can you all hear me? Make everyone aware about the Chamber of Commerce event next week on Tuesday morning. We are sponsoring a breakfast at the Fairview Boys and Girls Club on Fairview Boulevard, which is at the basement of the Marine Church. If everyone knows where that is, it's just about a block down from the post office, going down the hill there on the left, if you're... As you're going out of town. It's from 7:30 to 8:30. One of our youth was selected as Youth of the Year, Destiny Moore, she's going to be practicing her speech, because she's got to deliver that at the state level. So, all are invited, if you'd like to attend that. And, so we'd like to have good shout out to that. Any rate, we're also having, as you know, as I said last time, we're on March the... By the way, that's Tuesday, March the 11th, at 7:30. On March the 29th, we're having our 10th Annual Business Expo at the rec center. We have about 50 booth spots available in the gym there. If you... Anyone interested can see me for an application, they can go to our chamber website, fairviewchamber.org. They can call the office, it's 799-9290. There's lots of ways that you can get hooked up for that. And we appreciate everybody, everyone's support on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is awards and recognitions. Commissioner Sutton would like to recognize some persons in the chambers.
If I can, a couple of things, actually. Can you give me exact totals on the food drive? Well, I think that's great. That was with Helping Hands Saturday morning, and we had like 40 something volunteers show up, which is probably a record. Yeah. So, congratulations, congratulations to the food... But it was, if you couldn't hear her, that was total family served was 170, total people served was 506. So, I'll thank everybody that came out and helped out, and thank Helping Hands for contributing to helping feed the needy. Next, I've got, in the habit, if we have someone running for our office here, is try to introduce them. Give them just a second, send them to the podium for just a second, if they'd like to say their name. And if you... To me, if you're going to show enough interest in Fairview to come out here and sit with us and talk to us, you should be recognized. First on the list, because she hasn't been recognized before, is Ms. Parrish, running for county trustee's office. She's with the older gentleman, Julie Davis.
Thank you, thank you for having us. Of course, we're here to talk about an agenda item later, but I am Karen Parrish, and a candidate for Williamson County trustee. Have been with the trustee's office 15 years, 13 years as chief deputy, and thank you very much for having us.
Welcome.
And I've got Ms. Judy Oxford. Judy's been here before, but I want to recognize her again. She's having to come out, and if I can make a little clarification, ask for some new signatures on the petition, because there was an error when they were passed out. The wording was not correct as far as the state of Tennessee goes. Is that right, Judy?
Yes.
So they're having to reapply their application, which is... But it was for everybody, not just one person, so... Judy's here, she was born... She was... Went to school here? Graduated high school here?
I graduated in 2012.
So, just glad to have you out tonight, appreciate you interesting coming out and seeing us. And this is for the city judge position here. Tom Taylor is not running this year, so there it is.
Well, not running for that seat.
Not running for this seat again. He's running for General Sessions, Level 2. Is that correct? Yeah, it's Division 2. So, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Lee Girard, you've been here before, too, so I recognize you anyway. Lee's running for the same position. He also is going to be passing around a petition. Feel free to sign them. The same office that's replacing Judge Taylor in this court I do here. This is a very important decision for the people of Fairview. To me, it is, because it represents the beginning of a possible change in judicial work that we need to be getting done as far as enforcement goes. I know that, I think, all the candidates have met with Chief Harris, and talked with them about some possible improvements and things we can do a little bit different to help the city as far as law enforcement goes. Anything to say? Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you, welcome.
That's all I have. Anybody else? Did I miss somebody? Okay.
Will there be any other awards and recognitions from the board this evening? Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Public announcements, we have the emissions testing on Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 till noon. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the Chief Cooper. He has someone in here to tell us about the problems they've been having getting parts from, to fix our fire trucks. So, Chief Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. Hall, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Our fire truck is overdue, as you know, and Rosenbauer, the manufacturer, is concerned, so concerned, that the sales manager for the company flew in from Denver today to address us. And my understanding is Mr. Tim Johnson has... The reason it's late is not all their fault, and he has some good news.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, thank you, Chief. It was important for me to come out and speak with you. I know there's been some challenges, both weather-wise for us and also material-wise, so we've been working pretty diligently to get your truck ready. And Chief said, we've worked hard, and your truck will be ready for final inspection on April the 10th. And so I hope we perform well. I know we're looking forward to the fire department coming to visit us, and that your truck will meet their expectations and yours also, and they'll be ready to bring it home after the inspection. So, thank you very much for your business.
Thank you, we appreciate your commitment to us.
Thank you.
Next item is public announcements. Will there be any public announcements from the board this evening? The only thing I'd like to remind everyone in the chambers, as well as at home, is we have our IT guy, Mr. Nick, and he has made sure that we want to get connected and stay connected, and he's offered up some opportunities to stay plugged in to the city of Fairview and the goings-ons. It is attending meetings, website is fairview-tn.org. The video on demand, which is on the website, YouTube opportunities, Facebook, Twitter, website updates. There is a sign-in on the bottom right sheet of the homepage, where you can put in your email address, and you'll be alerted as soon as something is uploaded from the city, Comcast Channel 19, U-verse, and the Fairview Observer, which is a local newspaper. Any other public announcements from the board?
If I can add to that, I've talked with him tonight, because I know a lot of people have asked, when's the U-verse connection going to be done? And he's told me by the end of April. So, just to bring you up to date on how we stand on that. There's something they had to come in and change out, delayed it a little bit, so you can look forward about that time.
Okay. Next item is the approval of the minutes.
Approve. Second.
Any discussion? I did recognize on page 6, that there was a procedural error of no first or second on one of the agenda items. That was a recommendation of the... Recommendation from the tree board, and I will be adding that as we come to the item on the agenda, for it to be added and redone with proper proceeding. The approval of the minutes, any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So move, the next item is the approv... That's the 6th, got it. 7O Business. A has been deferred.
The... As we have swapped them out, the discussion that I've had, I recently had a discussion with the director of the Fairview Library, Mrs... Please help me with her name.
Grummenstein.
Grummenstein, he has to help me every time. And I was informed by her that the agreement that we had entered into with the county to where the 800-square-foot addition was to be placed, and we had agreed to pay approximately half of that at $64,000, or if I'm correct, or close to it. Correct me if I'm wrong. That the county has now decided not to move forward with that project, and we will not be doing that at this time. I assured her that we'll, upon another vote, when it does come up, that we'll be... I'm sure that the board would probably be more than happy to entertain that thought again, and I'm very disappointed that we're not moving forward with that. Just to bring you up to date on why it hasn't taken place, because I asked, and that's what I was told, and it was undecided a couple of days before I asked, so... They are very upset, to my...
And to give any background of that, in June of 2013, we had an item that amended the county school facility fund, which is facility taxes that come through the public school system, and that we had amended it, that it would allow that... Actually, the amendment works is that the facility tax would be received, and that it would be open for usage towards the public county library located in Fairview. So that was an inter-local agreement that was amended, and it was a relationship between the city and the county that we identified a way to participate in the expansion. As he said, unfortunately, it was not approved through the county, so it's still a work in progress. So we look forward to future conversation, but just to give update of when that started and what we were trying to achieve.
There was no action needed to be taken on that this time.
Okay, next item?
Next item is...
Discuss and take action on donation to middle, college, high school, Commissioner Sutton?
Yes, I've got Dr. Bass. If you can step forward. Just kind of put him on the spot a little bit, and just to give you a little bit of history behind that, I'm just going to let him give you the history behind it, okay? How's that sound? And then I can move forward with my motion. Is that all right?
Yes, hello, Dr. Bass, welcome, great to see you.
Those who don't know Dr. Bass, Dr. Bass was the principal of our middle school for a long period of time, and took great interest in our children, that when he was out here, and received his doctor while he was here, and has moved forward now to be the principal of the middle college high school, which you're fixing to change the name of, I think, right?
That's right, that's right.
So if you can tell us a little bit about the program of the children that are involved, especially from this community? Appreciate it.
Now, I want to thank all of you for this opportunity. It's good to see a lot of you again. I still live here in Fairview, so I just commute to Franklin. I did spend 15 years at Fairview Middle School, 13 of which was the principal. Always had a heart for the underdog, kind of the round peg, square hole. And so I jumped in chance when middle college high school opened, and this is a school for those kids who consider themselves round pegs and square holes. We have best school system in the state. We have seven credible high schools that are kind of prototypes of each other. And I believe there's a place for kids who don't fit into that prototype, who have amazing potential, amazing creativity, amazing things that can be offered, but maybe needed a different, more intimate environment, a different approach to education in order for that potential to be realized. And so that's what we're doing. The school is called Middle College High School because in 1998, it had its inception on the Nashville State Community College campus. Dr. Terry Greer was the superintendent at the time. And middle college, if you Google it, you'll get over probably 700 of them across the state, and every other middle college in the country is on a community college campus. The idea is that the students would go and take college classes and high school classes simultaneously, and be working on their associate's degree while they were still in high school. That worked very well until 2005, when for a multitude of reasons, Metro took over the Nashville State for their own middle college, and our middle college was moved to its present location at the old BGA campus next to the public library. The school kept its name, kept the same target student, but no longer was able to offer that unique programming, that unique high school experience. And so when I got there last year and saw the amazing potential of students who weren't succeeding, or not necessarily succeeding, but reaching a potential elsewhere, we said, let's redesign the whole thing around the strengths. So we're going to redesign the school around the idea of harnessing and leveraging creativity, and to feed this creative economy. We're going to look at computer programming and web design, and graphic design, and some game design even. We have an audio production facility, and we want to expand it into a recording studio for those kids who are musicians, but maybe don't, aren't interested in the band or choir. So these students can come from elsewhere and have a purpose. The other piece we're going to be diving into, a whole lot of it, is going to be a project-based learning. The... I like to say that we want to build intrinsic value for the work by giving the work itself extrinsic value beyond the school. So when kids know they're doing work that matters beyond the school building, that's how the work becomes meaningful. We're departing with nonprofit groups in the community and across the nation, and even I met today with the mission group that does work in South America and in Haiti. And we're going to be helping designing prototypes for projects, and looking at the idea of innovation, and helping to address issues, real issues that this generation of students will have to face. So that's just a glimpse. This was a five-minute version of what could be a much longer presentation. I do have some handouts, I'm going to let you guys read later, if that's okay, I have permission to give these to you, and leave these over. And I just want to appreciate everything this community's done for me, to make me feel so welcome. We do serve... 20% of our students do come from Fairview. And that's significant, because we're a relatively small part of the county. And that's looking to grow even next year. So I would say probably close to one-fourth of our students could be from Fairview, and we're serving Fairview kids. So it's... That's really cool. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With... To continue on that, before I make my motion, I've toured the school, looked at the facility. I've talked to Dr. Bass on many occasions, while he was still here before we lost him, about the possibilities of additional schools in our early college program, where you work, started working from eighth, ninth, 10th, I don't know. This is my opinion. That school has... 20% of their students are from Fairview. Next year is going to go up. They don't have the same opportunity that our four schools do have now with our support that we're giving from the school fund that we have. I am encouraging, in the process of encouraging, I've got some good cooperation working from the other cities that receive the same county funds that we do, to use for education, to help support that school, because they don't have an attachment to a city, although they're in Franklin. Like I said, students come from out here and go up through there. So what I'm asking for is just for the kids, and it's to help the programs, because it is a unique program up here that serves everybody, and I think every city should pitch into it, because every city does it. I'd like for us to be the leader in that program to help jumpstart a program, to help them. This is a one-time motion that I'm going to make. I would like to ask for, and serve a motion out there to, for a $15,000 donation to the school for the purpose, is just connected with what they're trying to do at the school. That would be my motion.
Second.
Discussion. My question would be, Dr. Bass, could you share with me who owns the school? Who owns the land? Who manages the school? Who's the party and players?
Yeah, we are a Williamson County public high school.
Okay.
Okay, our public school students, that can come from anywhere in the county. All of our students have to apply to get in, and we're looking for a student who's looking for something different. You know, we consider ourselves a very prodigal environment, where, you know, students who... We're very small. We have less than 100 students. We will never have more than 150 students. So a lot of our students who may have anxiety issues, or some kind of maybe, you know, dealing with some traumatic events that would necessitate a smaller, more intimate environment thrive when they get to our setting. But we are a public high school. The school itself is not owned by Williamson County Schools, it's actually owned by the Williamson County. And the mayor is... Roger Anderson is very supportive of our initiative, what we're trying to do there, too. So we're Williamson County's public school, but it's not a Williamson County Schools building. We use the county-owned building for our setting.
Okay, so are you currently in the Williamson County school budget, or in the Williamson County budget?
We are in the Williamson County Schools budget. As Commissioner Sutton said, it is difficult. The funding we get is based on per student. And so with less than 100 students, we don't get a lot of support from as much money as we need, especially in trying to launch such a different type of experience that we want to offer.
Are you at liberty to say what your annual budget is for the middle college?
Off the top of my head, ma'am, I would say that we received... Well, I... I would say it was about $8,000 that we received from the county.
Oh, that was your revenue from, but what is your total budget for the running of the school? Would you be at liberty to share that?
I mean, I guess, I guess you could say a lot of the issues that we... When talking about public schools, a lot of those issues are taken care of by the county. You know, obviously, most of the county's budget's tied up in salaries, while it's on the, at the district level, right? And so the money we get is for all of our materials and supplies and equipment and everything else.
You have the same standards of monies coming in as the rest of the school system?
We have... Our site-based funds that we get are based on our per student money, and that's the money we get from the county. Everything else is typically fundraised and raised at the school level. And again, that is also more difficult with fewer students, and so we just don't have a lot of... Because our community serves all the communities, we don't have a lot of community support coming, because all of our kids go elsewhere, in different parts of the county, and they leave.
Without puffing of exciting things, what would you feel would be a needed annual revenue for you to run the service for the 150 kids you see is needed?
What we would love to do, and I don't see this as puppy things, but we, with only 150 students, we would like to differentiate learning as much as possible. And it is very, very possible with... Currently, we have about 95 students in the building, actually, that we could and should be providing one-to-one technology for them. And with that one-to-one technology, which we already have a lot of laptops to do that, but what we hope to do is to offer them, say, cloud licenses for the Adobe Creative Suite, which is needed if you're going to be teaching students the graphic design. A lot of our program initiatives, the county's very, very supportive in the direction we're going, but there's not a lot of funding to support our initiatives. And so when we look at the programming, the software and equipment we're going to need to offer, some of this coding, the software and equipment to offer the graphic design, and forget the idea of, you know, you mentioned the recording studio, and everything comes with that, it'll have to come with that, it'll have to come from an outside benefactor. But a lot of these initial startup costs to have the equipment, one, just an example, we have a lot of students who are very passionate about art and that's their escape and that's their passion. What we want to do is teach kids that you can actually make a living with this artistic talent you have, but in a traditional school you have to choose between fine art and, or visual art I should say, and doing digital design, which is where the jobs are. This academy, this, we're basing this around apps, art and audio. Those are our three academies. Each one of those academies, apps, art and audio, are uniquely created based on the needs and interests of our unique students. Apps would be computer web design and coding. The apps, the arts is a hybrid of that visual arts program and the, and the digital design part. So right now, all we have is a bunch of paintbrushes and canvases. So if we're going to have our kids start learning how to do art on the computers and start using more tablets and everything else, we do have some startup costs that are associated with, you know, trying to get that going. And we'll be writing grants as well and we'll be looking at outside funding opportunities to do a lot of this, but we're looking at a multitude of sources to try to get some of this initial capital to help us.
Could you share with, with us if the approval of the request at the time, what, what are you focusing on or what, what would that be used for?
Initially, for the 15,000 that he recommended? We would probably start initially with the, the stuff we, the equipment and materials and supplies we need to start this web design and, and computer coding, okay? That is not offered, I think you can look anywhere in the, in any major newspaper or on TV and you're going to hear somebody saying that every high school graduate, whether you see yourself doing computers for a living or not, should be learning computer coding and web design. And that's a 21st century skill because that's where, you know, currently today there are 1,200 jobs in computer coding and web design in Nashville, unfilled jobs that cannot be filled. Something else we're going to do, and I'm remiss in not mentioning this, is that expanding opportunities for kids beyond a four-year college is very, is a very passion of mine. We are hoping by also transportation out here to Fairview, so to allow kids to get a bus out to our, to our facility and then a bus back home. But expanding opportunities beyond high school would mean partnering with the Tennessee College of Applied Technology and formerly known as the TTC, the Tennessee Technology Center. We're in the process of finalizing an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Regents. And they would be offering classes in web design and offering some classes and possibly expanding into the apps and the audio, I mean, I'm sorry, the audio and the arts academies as well to adult learners. And so what these kids will be able to do through our school is have what they call dual credit. So as they're earning these classes in apps, these, taking these classes in their area of interest or passion, apps, art and audio, they're also earning dual credit towards an industry certification. So the goal being that if a student can be 19, 20 years old and have an industry certification in web design, then he or she can go right to work and make a very good salary.
Okay. Board questions?
Just a comment. I did some quick calculations and we gave $40 per student out here. And if you assume, just rounding up based upon what Dr. Bass said, he has about 100 students?
160 next year.
I'm sorry?
Our goal is we had 160 students within two years.
Okay, but, but right now, this year, which is what we based our other one on. He has approximately 100 students of which given, give or take 25% or so are from Fairview. So if we apply the same $40, that would be $1,000, which is a long way from $15,000. Now granted, the specialized programs that Dr. Bass is talking about is have some extra cost to them that mainline school doesn't have. And there is something to be said because of, the numbers add up to a significant amount of money for the high schools out here. So I'm not, I'm not saying we should reduce it to $1,000, but I'm, I'm not sure $15,000 in terms of what we've already done for our schools out here is not too much of a contribution. And so I'm, I'm just throwing that out for discussion. I don't know what the right number is, but in, in reference to what we've done out here, and I'm sure Dr. Bass is doing everything he said, I've known Dr. Bass for quite some time, but, but maybe we ought to start a little slower and work our way up as we, as the population grows and, because I, I don't see this as just being a, a one-time deal and then we're never going to do it. I think we're probably, once we get middle college or whatever the new name's going to be, we get it into our system each year, I'm sure we'll make some sort of contribution like we do to the other places if money allows us to do that.
If, if I could, I'd be happy with whatever the board decides to do and I'm sure Dr. Bass will too. So keep in mind, one of the things that he said, many of the things that they do require one-on-one. Most of the things that they're, they're starting to do is going to take startup capital that they don't have. And it's, it's, it's a little bit bigger need right now to start off with because they don't, you have a parent teacher association?
Yes, correct. We do not have an official TTA.
So, I mean, there's a lot of fundraising efforts that's not there for the regular school that we have and that's, that's one of the considerations that I have. I don't have any children go to school there, grandchildren go to school there, anything else. I just think it's a need for the rest of the kids from the city to help them move forward with their education as well as we're trying to help them here. And I know it's a different ratio as far as what I'm asking for, but it's a different situation that they're into at the same time. They don't have the fundraisers, they don't have a football team, they don't have a basketball team, they don't have the ways to, to get that money coming into the program. So that's the reason I asked what I asked, but any adjustments y'all want to make, I'm welcome to entertain and change my motion.
Is it okay for me to speak? Okay, I know you probably have something to say too. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm going to be real honest, y'all know me, I love schools, I love to give the facilitation tax money away. I think it's something that we realized as a board was there and when we realized that we could use the money to help our schools, I'm 100% for that. When I saw this as an agenda item, I kind of cringed because I thought, eh, I'm not so sure because this is tax dollars, even though it's not property tax, it's off of the sales tax dollars that could be spent in Fairview. So it's kind of hard for me to say I would be against that. And it really got hard when Brian Bass got up there and I heard him speaking because years of knowing him also and having my kids go through, I know what his passion is and also by going through the ambassador program that Williamson County Schools did last year, learned that the, it is based on kids, how many kids are attending, and there is a, a dollar amount given to each kid. And I can understand with those few kids in your program, which I have no doubt you'll grow, a few kids in the program that it would be hard to have money to, for startup. I was sitting here writing notes as he was speaking because I thought the same thing as Commissioner Bussell. Why would we give the 20% kids that attend more than what we gave the kids out here in Fairview? So definitely when, you really lost my attention, I was thinking it was going to be hard, but when you said 15,000, it got really easy. But I do also, this is why we come to these meetings and listen, I would not be opposed to giving a gift, but I cannot see that it is any more, and as of right now, a one-time gift, but it being any more than what we would give to our own kids. I worry-
I'm sorry, these are our own kids?
I know they're our own kids, but live, that choose to go to these schools. They had to, they took a choi, they made a choice to go. I'm right, I know I'm right. They, it was not, they're kicked out, they have to go. Middle college was an option for the students to attend, just like Centennial High School. There's programs that any kid can go to several schools if Fairview does not offer the program. We have kids that go to Centennial High School in Franklin and, because either the program or whatever, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bass, or Dr. Bass. So I just worry, are we going to go give every kid? And I'm just throwing this out there, I'm not being the naysayer. I just want to bring the point is, are we going to go to Franklin and say, okay, this student, you know, if that's what the board decides, then, you know, let's do calculations of all the kids that go to another school. So, just throwing this out there for discussion. I, I am for giving a gift. I do think Dr. Bass does a good job and I have a feeling that he will make a real difference. But I don't know as a city of Fairview that we can fund a gift that size, nor would it be fair to give a gift more than what we gave the kids that, for whatever reason, because there may be, is there transportation? Do you have bus for transportation?
This year, we do not. Next year, we're starting at 9:00 AM just so that the elementary school buses can finish their routes and have a pickup point in each zone across the county so we can serve those kids who don't have transportation. We are taking freshmen next year for the first time ever too.
Okay, and that's what I was thinking, is actually, there could be students here that would like to go but don't have means of transportation. So there's a lot of issues when we come to the school system. I wish it was perfect, but it's not. And so I, with all that soapbox said, I would be for some gift, but we need to be very considerate of, we have a lot of kids from Fairview, Fairview kids, that attend other schools. Just want to throw that out there.
Other discussion?
Vice Mayor, give it up.
Not other than I would like to hear whatever figure someone else might be more comfortable with.
A quick question while you're doing it. What, what grade levels does it go through?
Right now, we are 10 through 12. Next year, we'll be 9 through 12.
I, in listening to Dr. Bass, I think that we should, however many students he has from Fairview, we should pay the exact amount that we have from that. And then on top of that, we should add $1,500 as a gift. That is a, you know, a separate donation to help him start, as a donation to start this program. So estimating around, you know, 2,000 to 2,500, depending upon how many actual students from Fairview he does have. But I believe it was $41 or $40 or $43 or whatever it was, if he's got 20 students, he gets that times 40, whatever, whatever we paid, but then we give him an additional $1,500 on top of that as just kind of a donation to help him, as a seed donation to start some of these projects.
Is that presented as an amendment to the motion?
Ma'am?
Is that presented as an amendment?
Well, it's just for discussion right now. I don't know how everybody else, if, if, if we kind of move that way, then I'll make it a motion.
I'm favorable.
Yes, ma'am. But I think the Vice Mayor was just asking what my opinion was.
Just, just for clarity also, this is not funded out of general funds for the city. This is funded out of the school, that's the correct name for it, pardon.
Facility tax.
Facility tax that's returned to us from the county to the city to be used on education for the city. And my opinion is those 20 students are part of the city, or 30 or whatever they are.
Well, they, we have, they are part of the city and I do, I do agree with that, but we don't, they may not all live in the city limits. So some of them may live in county, and I'm not trying to split hairs, guys, I'm just giving valid points to it. But the facility tax, and I don't know if somebody can correct me and please feel free to, but the facility tax, we are really fortunate. There's us and maybe one other Williamson County-
Brentwood.
Brentwood, that gets the, the portion of the money back. So as far as this gift that we're able to give, it comes from your sales tax dollars that are collected and then given a portion back that we can use on our schools, local schools, just to give you some more information.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. Would there be any other discussion?
Well, I guess I would kind of defer back to Commissioner Sutton that, I know you're the one that was been working on this and this has been your, your pet project. Are the figures that I threw out there, are they reasonable to you or do you think that I'm undercutting what you're trying to do?
Well, they, they are reasonable and I understand where the figures came from as per student that we've done here. The, the, the only thing that I can say, and like I said, I agree with whatever you decide to do because it was yesterday, it was zero. And so whatever we do, Dr. Bass will be smiling already, we'll be very grateful for what we have. But I'd, I'd like for us to keep in mind the fundraising efforts that they can generate, they can't. They are kind of, we talk about islands all the time. They're kind of on the island by themselves. This is not an ongoing thing. We contribute X amount of dollars every year to each student in the city. So, so far we have since Commissioner Carroll was one of the ones that uncovered, the money was sitting there. And we've got probably close to $400,000 in the fund that is just sitting there for use for the, for the, for the schools. And so, you know, whatever motion y'all want to make is fine, but I think there's a serious need there for diverse type of education rather than the single, I don't want to say single minding because that doesn't sound right, but a single minding type of curriculum that we have now as a school system. There's some kids that, that will, that are in this program, Dr. Bass, you correct me if I'm wrong, and y'all know how I am, I get passionate about something, I just keep on going. There's some kids in the school would never probably complete high school because of lack of interest in the studies that they have now. Is that pretty close?
Absolutely.
And with that, absolutely, that is coming across. That's the reason I'm saying there's, there's a little special interest here for, for doing that because these kids probably would not make it in regular school. So then they, it's something extra, they're no, they're no more special than the rest of our children, but a lot of children, it has been determined that they're having a real rough time in regular school and would probably be dropouts if it weren't for a program like this. And so I think, I think we need to look seriously at that. This is startup, this is not, we're not going to fund it for the rest of our life. These are dollars that we need to spend on the kids and I'll entertain whatever motion y'all want to make.
Dr. Bass? I had it and then I lost it, I'm sorry. Oh, I got it back. Are you making presentations at the other city boards asking for this kind of money?
Oh, no, sir, I'll be honest with you. I'm, I'm measuring aside contact with, a couple days ago, asked about the interest in coming here talking with. You can see I'm asking about what we're trying to do, trying to show the chance.
Okay. Do you have plans, now having come here, do you have plans to go ask Franklin and Brentwood?
No, not, not asking for my, no, I've been talking at the board level on quite a minute and all my work now is just getting approval on the direction and I've had to get some approval for the direction. But no, I had, we're looking at some possible grants to cover.
Mr. Bussell, if I can add to what you just asked him, it is my full intentions, and I've talked with him before and I've talked with Spring Hill and a couple of more of them, to go to these other boards and ask them to step up to the plate too for the school because it, it is all of our children, it's not just our children, it's all of our children. And with these funds sitting in these accounts and like, like Commissioner Carroll said, us in Brentwood are the only ones distributing these funds, we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that are sitting in these coffers doing absolutely nothing for our children. And I just, I'm passionate about it, I'm sorry. I believe that education is the first thing we should do for our children, to move them forward in the world today, and he's got some great ideas and the school does too. And I just think we need to support it as best we can. If not 15, give me another figure, I don't know. But I, the plans are to move forward with the rest of the, the cities within the areas that are receiving those funds because these children come from all over the county, not just here.
Brentwood does not receive the funds, they just give a donation to the board. There is another city that does receive, I don't, and-
They are, we had the figures at one time and I've got them somewhere, I know, because I looked at what each one of them have in their coffers.
Okay.
And they're just not putting them out there.
Okay.
And they should be.
Okay, we'll look into that.
If I might, Mayor, first I'd like to make a comment on Commissioner Carroll's comment. And while she did say that some of the kids were, were from here going to that school and not all of them, of course, out of the 95, if only 20% of them are from here, but correct me if I'm wrong, if we gave, when we gave the money to our schools here-
I know what you're saying.
We gave per student, not per where that student lived.
Correct.
We gave per student where they lived in the county or whether they lived in the city. So I'm not sure that's a fair assessment of what we would be doing with the money for this school as well. With that being said, I'm not against Commissioner Bussell's possible- With that being said, I'm not against Commissioner Bussell's possible amendment to the motion from the standpoint that we could do that, and then we could let Dr. Bass bring us a, when he puts together a capital improvement outlay on a plan he has together for the future, and say, "It's going to cost this much, can y'all help us at that time?" And he could bring that to us at that time. And just to, I'm not going to recognize her by name, but I know that there is someone in this crowd that's told me that they were having trouble getting what they needed out of Fairview High School, and they attended this school, she's in this very room tonight, and she graduated from there with honors, and this, it changed her life, so.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of stories like that, too. Vice Mayor's correct, we did not, we just gave to the local schools, and it was per number. So, I was just pointing out the fact that, you know, the city kids first is. So, I totally agree, and I'm on board. I still think that Mr. Bass would have a, Dr. Bass, I'm sorry.
Right.
Well, I know, I was just, that's how you call you.
It's hard to call you doctor.
And so, I'm like, really trying hard to call you correctly. But I do feel like this is so late in the year, that we will do our budget, so we can give the same that we gave to the, the local schools per student, Fairview students. And then, at that point, I would love for you to come back and ask, you know, as the budget times, we can add you into our budget. I mean, there is a need, and I'm not knocking that. And I wish personally, out of my own checkbook, I could fund some grand program, but unfortunately, that's not how that happens. And I encourage people to make donations to the school, and, you know, I'd love for people to get involved. I mean, Commissioner Sutton, I think, you know, this promoting the cause is a great cause, so I will agree with that.
Well, Dr. Bass is okay?
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Bass said he had 95 students, 40, that's $3,800. I make a motion that we donate $3,800 to Middle College.
So, you're saying for every student?
That's what we did at the other high schools, other schools out here. We didn't, we didn't cut hairs, so there's Fairview students there, 9,800, I mean, $3,800.
Well, I don't know that I agree with that. I say a local school. I mean, and we're, it's in Franklin, so I don't think we should be the sole community to fund this.
Well, that's not the intention.
Maybe, maybe we are the sole community that starts this, and everybody else jumps on board.
Okay, whatever, y'all, we can take a vote and amend the motion, but, you know, I'm just saying, let's start it, and let's give what we gave to the school here for these Fairview students. And Mr. Bass, even though I'm sure Dr. Bass would have loved $15,000, I think he would be thankful for any gift that we gave him.
I, for lack of a second, I withdraw my motion. I would make an emotion then for an amendment that we give $40 for however many students he has from 37062 zip code, plus an additional $1,500 kicker. It's just a donation from the city of Fairview.
Second.
Second. We have a duly first and second amended motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. And that's hard to do, sorry, but it's not how I want it. I don't think it's best.
Okay. The motion carries, and the next item on the agenda, 7D. Discuss and/or take action on vacant board seats. I'll look for direction from the staff. Do we have additional applications currently for the Board of Zoning Appeals? Do we have additional applications for the Industrial Development Board? And do we have any citizen that is wanting to participate in the Finance Review Committee? These are three opportunities that we have for anyone in the chambers, or anyone in the public, citizens that would like to be involved. We have a Board of Zoning Appeal seat, an Industrial Development Board seat. They meet once a year or as needed. The Board of Zoning also meets as needed. And the Finance Review Committee is someone that we are looking for, that has finance background, that is willing to kind of get in, roll up the sleeves, and work with the committee as we move through the budget time, as well as throughout the year, as items come up that the Board of Commission deems necessary to go into a committee or subcommittee discussion. So, if you have interest, please see City Manager Hyatt, sorry, Hall, or Ms. Johnson before you leave, or you can reach them at City Hall Monday through Friday. They'd be glad to take your application or answer any questions about the boards and their requirements. Okay? Moving on to 7E. Discuss and/or take action on additional streetlights in the city. I will bring an update, and then turn the floor over to Commissioner Bussell. We have talked about this in the past, we worked in a workshop, we come together with some of the safety issues from the Fire Department, the Police Department, at that time, Codes Department Director, and the purpose of that was to identify places in the community that were dark, that dangerous, curves, entrances, exits, things of that nature, that was identified of great need. That project has been completed last summer, I believe, and then the secondary part of the project, it was a three-phase project, the second was to identify subdivisions, cul-de-sacs, parks, side streets, things that may have not been considered a safety hazard, but things that do need to be lit up. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Commissioner Bussell to explain the research.
Okay. What I've just passed out, and I apologize, I didn't have a thumb drive, or I would have bought, brought an overhead, but it would have been a pretty busy overhead if I'd had it. But what I just passed out is a compilation taking from Mr. LeVorn's previous work, where he met with Middle Tennessee Electric Representative Jeremy Fox, and they had already identified how many streetlights would be optimum in these subdivisions as listed. Clairview Meadows, Hidden Lake, Kingwood, Leverett Meadows, Meadow Wood, New Montgomery Place, Polston Place, Rolling Acres, Fernvale Estates, Sharp's Run, Cherokee Hills, Woodbridge, and Braxton Bend. In addition to that, Mr. Fox and I added to that what I refer to as Old Fairview, which is really Dogwood Estates and Glen Haven, and is the older section of town kind of in there. And so, what you have is you have a map of each of those subdivisions with annotations, either circles or stars, that tell you where the streetlights would go if approved. You'll notice that some intersections are omitted, that is because they already have streetlights. So, if, if we put them every place that was optimum based upon the prior research, plus the additional research for Old Fairview, Dogwood Estates and Glen Haven, it would be 69 new lights at an annual cost of about $5,800. Now, that is a estimate. I cannot give you an exact cost until installation, because one pole may require a little more to put the light up here, one pole may require less, depending upon what's already on the electric pole. The average, though, prior to this, was 675, and with the rate increase from TVA and those types of things, the best estimate that Mr. Fox and I had was, could come up with, was $7 per light. Now, in the, I offer an option B on the sheet that I passed out. Option B is intersections only. Those are the intersections that currently in these subdivisions do not have lights. I didn't provide you a handout, but when you look at each subdivision, you can see which ones are in the cul-de-sacs, which ones are in the curves, and which ones are at the lights. That is the lesser proposal, or the bottom line, which is around $2,800 a year, if we just put them in the intersections. And I didn't list it in the chart, but there is an option C, and I actually think it is the best option, and that is in, that we would, we would in the old Fairview start by only putting them at the intersections. Currently, there are not very many streetlights in Dogwood Estates and Glen Haven, and if we go in there and place 20 streetlights, it's going to look like Christmas daytime. I mean, it's going to go from dead dark to, to your living room kind of light. So, I think that's probably too far to bring that older section of town. I know from a fact, talking to some of my neighbors, they're not too opposed to the intersections, they kind of like the idea of it being a dark street. Those, of course, are locked in their houses. Those of us that walk at night, we kind of like to have some less dark. But as a compromise, I would suggest that what we do approve is the 11 in Dogwood Estates and Glen Haven, and then the optimum amounts in the other subdivisions as identified by Mr. LeVorn and Mr. Fox, which would run us about a $5,000 increase annually to our utility bill.
What was the total count on that C option call?
That would be 60 lights. We would be inputting 60 lights.
Okay. First question would be, where would we pay for it in the budget?
Well, I would suggest that we, they can't get right on this, obviously, they need some lead time. So, it's going to be next year's budget. They would, they would start July the 1st, and we would just have to add $5,000 to the utility line item in order to be able to afford it.
Was there a motion, or?
No, I was just asking a question. Clarify.
Okay. I don't know if we opened a discussion, or what.
Well, but I will make a motion that we go with option C, which is 60 new lights at an annual cost of approximately $5,000. And the way we paid for it is we don't start until next fiscal year, and we add $5,000 to our utilities as part of our general budget process.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for your work, I appreciate that. Lighting up places that are dark and dangerous is always a good thing.
Yes. So, thank you. And I, I will get with the city manager about which person on staff, he'll need someone, I'm not authorized to obligate the city, obviously, so somebody will need to work with Mr. Fox, and I'll get with the interim city manager or new one if we select it to determine who on staff needs to get in the paperwork.
Okay.
While we're on this subject, I'm kind of stretching a little bit, so if I'm wrong here, Mayor, please feel free to correct me. But since we were talking to streetlights, I was, I have two other projects that sort of fall into that, that I just kind of expanded out to, and that is lighting up our welcome signs and History Village. So, I don't know if it's appropriate that I kind of tag that in there, or do we need to set that up for a different agenda item, or are we going to do projects later on, maybe?
Projects would have been where it come up, and we didn't have that. I would rather it not be added to this particular agenda item, but I am very anxious to hear more about the welcome signs being lit up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item F. Discuss and/or take action on scheduling the Middle Tennessee Electric, the Land Trust of Tennessee workshop with the BOC to discuss easements, rightaways. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a tentative date of the 18th of this month at 7:00, and if that meets you all scheduled, then we can go ahead and set it up. Is it about in the middle of spring break?
Have they already confirmed? Did we have more options?
Let me check with Keith right quick.
We had asked for three options, so we can try to narrow our schedule down.
I remember they could fit in the 13th, I believe, to make that one.
The land trust will be available on the 18th, is that what you said? Okay.
Mayor, I'm not, but I have no objection to holding the meeting, y'all go ahead and hold it.
I may not either, so at this point, being spring break and families, I just want to make sure we have a full discussion.
I'm going anywhere.
Who else is here?
I'm here, but I work, so during spring break, that's one of my times to be open. So, I'm not sure, 10:00 is what you said?
Seven.
Seven. Seven, not.
At 9:00. Okay. Well, I'll be around, so, but I don't know what, if more commissioners wanted to be here, or what.
The land trust was the problem with scheduling, not Middle Tennessee Electric, is that the way you took it?
Yes. Yes.
So, we didn't have alternative dates?
Well, we had the 13th, but the land trust could not make that one.
Okay, all right.
Well, if you're not comfortable, let them go back and see if they're, move it back. I mean, how quickly do we need to do it?
Why, I don't see why we couldn't do it like any other project that the land trust is part of. Why don't we have the meeting with Middle Tennessee Electric, and then send it to the land trust for their approval?
The purpose of land trust being involved was a discussion of how they handle in other land trusts. They had a key piece of information.
Okay.
Is the reason we asked for them to be involved? Because them being involved allows them to have their say-so before we have anything, and have to ask for their permission. So, we felt it valuable for them to bring their past experiences, so we would, you know, know what they do on other parks that they have the protection on, or the conservation easement on. Okay.
Since it's a workshop, you wouldn't have to have any action on it, and y'all, they could relate it to you at another board meeting.
Okay. Would we have a majority board there? Yes? Majority board, yes?
Possibly.
I'm in town, I can go.
I know I'm out of town.
Okay.
It's spring break, so I'm gone.
Oh, yeah, your wife. I was like, your kids are grown.
Could I request that you ask for a secondary date towards the end of March, and email us, and that way, we can probably reset very easily and quickly? But I do know that Middle Tennessee Electric is needing to move forward, so by the end of the month, we surely can find something appropriate for everyone.
Okay.
That pity?
Yes, and we'll try to find that out Monday when she's here, going to the park, too.
Yeah. That's the point. Three options are always best, that way, you don't have to go back and punt, but thank you for that, I appreciate y'all collaborating.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other comments on that? 8A, new business. Discuss and/or take action on Planning Commission's recommendations for rezoning application for property located at Highway 96 North, map 18 parcel 22.00, 25.87 acres, from RS15 to CG Commercial General, the McRedden Family Partnership owner.
Who'd approve?
Second.
We have a first and second discussion?
Mayor, that's just authorization for me to prepare the documents.
For the documents to be prepared. We don't need a vote?
Yeah, we need.
Yes, we have a first and second. Any other discussion?
Was that the Planning Commission recommendation that we do approve it?
Yes. In your paperwork, it reads, "On February 19, 2014, the following item was voted by the Fairview Municipal Planning Commission, with a recommendation to be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for consideration." They did reevaluate, and they put it back, saying their motion stands.
And I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Good question, thank you for clarification. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, item 8B. Discuss and/or take action on Williamson County trustee request for collection of future city of Fairview property taxes. And I would like to make a few statements of history on this subject. About a month or so ago, the Williamson County trustee, Mr. Joey Davis, visited with us and presented to us an idea and a process that is taking place in, currently in Brentwood, Franklin, Nolansville, and Thompson Station, and wanted to propose the opportunity to the city of Fairview. And what that was for in cooperation effort to consolidate the property tax billing and collecting services, the city of Franklin, Brentwood, Nolansville, and Thompson Station, and the Williamson County trustee's office are providing you with a consolidated bill statement. And this was in the tax, don't know if anyone received, I think everyone received in their tax bill, but this is to consolidate to where citizens of Fairview, county residents, pay the taxes at one place with one envelope. So, the convenience in that is the presentation and the opportunity So, the convenience in that is the presentation and the opportunity for them to be of a service to the City of Fairview. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Trustee Joey Davis if you'd like to share a word or comments.
Please do.
Welcome. Ms. Parrish, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Todd, and Commissioners and others. Thank you for allowing us to be here. We did take in, we have always, for some years since Nolansville-Thompson Station came in as cities, the TCA says, if, I live south of them, if we weren't incorporating, our governing board asks the trustee to collect those taxes, the trustee of the county must collect those taxes. Now, there are statutory fees outlined, and the TCA tell us what we charge for those fees. So, as I said, since Nolansville and Thompson Station have been cities, we've been collecting those, and we charged them the statutory fee, and Mrs. Parrish has outlined that for you, as it would apply to you. But then, when we decided we would, Franklin and Brentwood both had interest, and we had interest, because we felt like it's in the best interest of the people that we, that I'm elected to and my staff that we serve. And in particular, the elderly do have to come in and do property tax relief, because they were coming in, having to leave us, go to Franklin, go to Brentwood, and we did that. So, she's worked up a thing here for you. You all have, according to 2013 tax roll, you have 3,664 parcels, and your tax aggregate is a little over $1 million. If, if we collect, if you decide you want us to collect those taxes for you, and we apply the statutory commission, it'd be about $21,000. So, when we got that far with Brentwood and Franklin, it was going to cost Franklin in excess of about a quarter of a million dollars for us to do that for them, and going to cost Brentwood somewhere a little over $200,000. And Mrs. Parrish sat down with the City of Franklin and City of Brentwood officials and worked out a, a deal where it was, it was palpable to them and palpable to us, and she worked out a $4 per parcel fee. Now, if you all were to approve us of doing that, that would cost you somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000. If this board approves that, then it would take a, an interlocal agreement between the City of Fairview and the county is where we would go with that, because I don't have the authority to, to waive that fee for you unless the county commission gives me that authority to do that. We'd like to do it for you. We don't gain anything from it. We don't make any more money. The county gets about $15,000 from there. You'd pay that upfront every year, and you would be out of tax collecting business. We do everything for you. We answer all the phone calls. We do all the mailing. We put that on one piece of paper, so it did not, for all of us here in this room, we still, we own the county. We're, we're stockholders of this corporation called Williamson County. So, for us to do that for each one of those municipalities, didn't cost us any more money. Cost us a few more phone calls, cost the staff a few more, but we're willing to do that for you, and we think it's the right thing to do. But we're not pushing stuff. We're often to do it for you. We're glad to do it for you, and I'll answer any questions.
I'm taking over current property tax collections for Franklin and Brentwood. We also, we also, I'm sorry, we also took over their delinquent property tax collections, sort of gratis, no extra charge. And so, there's quite a bit of work that goes along with that, with administering, even though they're in the court, in the clerk and master's office, that then comes through us. We keep up the tax records, keep them marked, marked and turned over, and take that money. And so, you know, the, the delinquent taxes, you know, kind of came along in the deal. And then, when we took over for Brentwood and Franklin, that was in the summer of 2013. So, they actually had 2012 taxes that weren't in the courts yet, and we just included those on our delinquent billings and have worked those delinquent tax collections as part of the, the one charge.
Worked very smoothly, and I, I, I don't like to just send you, if you, Mayor Todd, if you mail in to us your 2013, and statutorily, if you indicate on your check or on the tax reimbursement advice coupon that you're paying 2013s, we cannot apply that to 2012, even though you owe 2012. So, we apply that to 2013 as you directed us to, and I write you back a letter saying, oh, by the way, are you aware you've got 2012 taxes already in court or in our office or in the court? And I feel like I have nothing documented on, that we have really helped the City of Franklin and Brentwood with their delinquent taxes, because I'm writing a lot of letters every day, saying, oh, by the way, did you know you haven't paid the City of Franklin taxes yet from last year? But see, now, that solves that problem, because when they get that bill for us, from us, it's got the city tax on there, and they write one check. And by the 13th, by contractually, what we're doing, City of Franklin also, where your finance department, is we contractually agree to make every effort to have you use your money by the 13th of the month. So, when Mrs. Ryan, our bookkeeper, again, statutorily, must have our books closed for February by March the 10th, sometimes we will be able to get your, your money on March the 10th. So, we have to give her a little bit of breathing room to get that done, and we transfer the money to you electronically. It's, it's just so easy.
Mayor, if I could.
Seems like a best-case practice. Discussion? Questions?
Mr. Davis, you made a statement that you, your office would answer all the phone calls. How will you make that happen when these people are continually going to be calling City Hall and us while there's confusion? How will you answer all those phone calls?
We're going to try to get those phone calls directed to us by inserting what we do with City of Franklin. The City of Franklin and Brentwood on their own went out and did a mailing in their, put in their water bills and things to inform the public that, starting with this 2013 tax bill, they were out and called our office on the tax bill in direction to call us for all questions. And we have an insert like Mayor Todd has shown you there, says, oh, by the way, called, we can't trust these office here. We're collecting your taxes for you. We, we, I, you know, a couple of words for someone to find their job, and I don't like that I think or I feel in that, but I think that we did an outstanding job. Joey Davis did. Karen Parrish and staff did of letting the people of Brentwood and Franklin know that we were there to take their money for them and to apply that back to the city.
The greatest majority of our city doesn't come to your office to pay their taxes. They pay them online. They pay them at the, the local bank branch. Just a, a few weeks ago, I met a gentleman outside walking into the building, and he just paid his city taxes, I believe, and he didn't, he didn't seem like he wanted to drive to Franklin and stand in a, in a long line. And I told him, well, sir, you don't have to. You can go down to the Bank of America, and you can pay that. And he, he was thrilled that he didn't have to do that. How would you tell us as a board to the citizens here, what benefit is it going to do to that gentleman when he can do the same thing, except it's going to cost him more money, because some of his city tax dollars is going to have to go for your office to do it, when he could just drive right down there when he goes past the bank maybe two or three times a day?
Well, first off, these banks that we've got to do it, charge us no fee for that. As all of you, and I may be some bankers in the room, know that it's increasingly difficult for them to make money with the interest rates like they are. I look for those things to go away, Commissioner Johnson. But to say that we didn't have anybody in there, I've been there for 20 years, and for some of you who've been in the office those last few days know that I enjoy standing out there, leading people, directing traffic, and making sure everybody gets served. The week before last week, we were covered up. Last Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we had lines, short lines, I have four lines, not more than three or four at a time, all day long. So, I opened big mouth Friday morning and said, we're going to have an easy day, guys, because the whole world has been in here the last nine days. Shows my lack of intelligence, Commissioner Johnson, because we had them lined up all day Friday, also. I can't tell you where they came from. We have collected so far, up through the 27th of February is where the bookkeeper, we've collected 87.5% of our budget, of our taxes, and Brentwood, City of Franklin, and Thompson Station, Nolansville. That's what we can do for you. And what you don't have to do is, you don't have to pay any money to mail a bill. You don't have to pay any money for postage. You don't have to send in delinquent bills. And what that does for us, with, if you all come in, with the exception of Spring Hill, we have the same delinquent tax attorney that's going to collect those taxes. When they collect ours, they'll collect yours. We collect, we, for your information, our office always collects, since I've been the trustee and before my time, we consistently collect anywhere from 99.6% to 99.7% of everything we're challenged to, or tasked to collect.
Wow.
No one in state government measures collection rates, but I'm told by those in the comptroller's office, that Williamson County is not the top in the state. We're at least in the top one or two or three. And I think that's what we can do for you, sir.
Questions?
Thank you.
Comments?
Well, I'll ask some questions to staff if we get a motion.
Okay. Well, actually, I'm, I'm not real in position, I would think, as far as a motion, because there's still some unsettled information. As he shared with us, we've got 3664 parcels, and their offer is the $4 per parcel, which is approximately $14,656. My question then would be to CFO is to gather information as we're going through the budget process to discuss with us the comparison at budget time of what we are currently paying for that particular job to be done, and then also how that offsets. Because in a hypothetical world, if we're paying 20 and we can get it done for 14656, it would be definitely something that would be a win-win-win for everyone. If that's not the case, and that numbers are alternate, then that would be a discussion of whether the issue is moot point or something that we would want to move forward on. The, the second thing to that would be, by him stating that, or the second question I'd have, by him stating that the 13th of the month, the money is received by the City of Fairview, would you, as CFO, have any comments or questions for that particular part of his presentation?
During the tax season, daily, about four or five months out of the year? Had it in three months, like four or four months?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question, sir.
How many months out of the year? Is that 12 months out of the year?
12 months out of the year. Yes, sir. Now, and we had, yes, we had one of the four that asked us, if we get in problem, can you help us out? And we have been able to do that for them in the middle of the month.
Well, and that was one of the things that you think of, because so much of the budget is projected incomes, and, you know, you don't want to have to dig in your reserve to pay for your budget. So, if you're counting on the reserve, you know, it's hard to think you couldn't access the money. Vice Mayor brought up a point about the convenience of paying. Originally, when this was mentioned, I think for, from the prior city manager, they gave us a higher amount, and maybe that was before you negotiated the $4 a person. But it was almost about what we would already pay somebody to do it, so it didn't really seem feasible. But now, the, at $15,000, you know, it really piqued my interest, and I did just round up. But I, you know, I really think there needs to be some discussion and some time spent on it, and I do like the mayor's suggestion of maybe trying to calculate. I have a feeling our city recorder, who is mainly responsible for the taxes, she may have help, especially during the higher times. But the main responsibility, I have a feeling that the two positions were combined at Mr. Hyatt's suggestion when there was employee changes. But we have found that that position was very overwhelmed by the lady that left before. So, obviously, I haven't asked Brandy, you know, if it is a lot for one person to handle. There's, my point is, there's probably plenty of work around the city, even if we did relieve her of that as a part of her job description. So, I just want to throw that out there, because prior to that, I know Teresa was very overwhelmed, because we pretty much laid a lot of stuff in that one position. And I don't think people are aware how much.
If it makes financial sense, then.
I kind of sort of forgot, you know, in my country, we're kind of sort of maybe forgotten. We're, we're not here to try to take anything.
Oh, no.
We're here because we've got people in the office that said, why do I have to get up, especially the elderly, tax relief? And the person before, Ms. Forehand, really helped us develop some things, she and they, where we tried to help the people. And that's the only reason we're here. We're not trying to get into your business or anything. If you want us to do it, we're glad to do it for you. If you don't want us to, we're okay with that, too. We're not, we're just here to offer, if you want the trustee's office of Williamson County to collect your taxes, we'll be glad to do it for you.
Mr. Davis, would you consider sending one of your employees to Fairview one day a week?
No, sir, not right now.
Okay.
We have done some, Commissioner, this, we've done, it's, it's going to sound like I'm bragging, and maybe I am. In 1994, when I went in, we had collected taxes on 39,000 parcels, and our tax aggregate was some $40 million. This year, my staff are collecting taxes on 212, don't worry, about 212, that, that tax aggregate floats all the time, as I'm sure you're supposed to tell you. There's about $212 million. When I went into office, they used 280 hours a week, work hours, 560 hours every two weeks. I want to tell you, sir, that today, because of what Commissioner Johnson brought up, because of how we bid our bank business, sir, we use the same amount of work hours virtually day in and day out. During the tax season, the last few days, we have some extra come in to help us. But it's been because we bid our bank business, mind, mind your business, it belonged to everybody's room. We bid that out, and people told me I couldn't do that. We bid it out at zero cost to see what would happen. Karen and I worked this thing out, and we thought we'd throw the fishing lure out there and see what came along. Guess what? We had a bank that took that, sir. We don't, you and I don't pay one single solid tarry penny for any of our banking services, sir. Not only that, sir, they agreed to help us. We wanted to go away from the state. We wanted to put a Meeker line on our tax bill, so that we could have this bank do lockbox service. Last year, sir, they processed 27,000 checks for you and I at $53 million at no cost. And that's what I'm saying, that we can do this, if you want us to, we can do this and move this on. I hear you all talking a while ago about Twitter and all this stuff. I mean, I can't even turn my cellphone on yet. And that's one of the reasons I'm really retiring, because I'm lost in this new world. And these people that are behind me, and you all, you're in this world, and that's kind of, I'm like a, I believe the fail over here. You know what that is? That's ugly grandfather. Calling the old man, and he's right. It's time to go. Any other questions I can ask before I insult somebody else?
Comments?
Thank you.
Tony and I go back a few days.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Did you have comments, Commissioner Vesell?
No, ma'am. Without a motion, we really don't need to be making comments. If we have any more questions for Mr. Davis, we need to ask him, but without a motion, we can't really discuss the proposal amongst ourselves.
The comments or information that's been shared, and I would like to, as I stood in line in Franklin to pay my taxes, I greeted and talked with probably six or eight different Fairview citizens that was overwhelmingly, please, 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 I wish I didn't have to come here, and that was my sentiments, exactly. Other cities, I have here letters of recommendation from the mayor, Ken Moore, from Franklin, as well as the city administrator, Greg, I must mess up his name.
Langlars.
Langlars. Langlars. And, uh, their comments are just, um, talking about how they have, um, found this to be a win-win situation. One less bill, a plus for us, less citizen confusion, will save money by increased efficiency and not having to upgrade software. It is a win-win. And, um, Thompson Station, they just shared as far as what it saved them by going to the service. There's no way we could do it for that amount. Also, it has been great for the staff to be able to direct tax questions to the trustee's office and not have that added work bu- burden. We probably get a hundred calls a year that we redirect to the county. Uh, hope this is helpful, and we do appreciate the service. So, wanted to kind of share that we did a little homework, and this will be a great discussion as we go through the budget time of exactly how the differences is of what we are currently paying for that service and what they are offering us as a vendor service. So I do appreciate your information.
One more comment. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just had a quick question, Mr. Davis. And I think y'all told us this before, and I apologize for not logging it in. But, uh, what is your drop-dead date for the coming tax year that you need to know an answer from us?
I could say May the sixth, after the primary, and I'll be through with that.
No, no, no.
I would say, I would say somewhere, we need to know somewhere along, if we're going to try to publicize it and get it out to the people, we would need to know somewhere June, July, no, no later, no later than July.
So, so we have time, like the mayor's talking about, to run it through our budget process to talk about.
We will come back to you. And, and sending someone to you is not out of the realm of possibilities. I didn't give you the right answer. We are, we brainstorm, every Tuesday morning, we sit down as a staff and say, what did we do wrong last week? What did we do right? And how can we go step forward? We have thought about a lot of these kind of things, sir. We want to. But the only way we could do it would be go into a bank or a municipality somewhere like yours to do it. Any other questions?
No, but I will make a comment to you. You would be surprised on the emission testing, you know, forever. People, one of our big complaints we hear is, oh, we don't want to have to drive to Franklin. It costs money. You don't want to have to drive. And so, opening up the mission testing out here has been huge for the city of Fairview. So that is a thought, as, as we move forward and discuss. And if this is an option, you know, I'd really like you to consider that, that there is such a need and there is, um, it is a distance. So, not too far, but it is a distance.
Remember, Commissioner Carroll, I'm still trying to work on those five hundred and sixty work hours every two weeks.
Ah, gotcha.
Since she brought that up, and I was fortunate enough to attend the, uh, the meeting we had with them here a couple of months ago, I asked the very question on whether or not his office could reciprocate what he was asking us to do. And I asked if his office could do that for us. Commissioner Busell just asked if he could send a, an employee here. He said at this time, he could not. But I feel just as the admission testing is here, his office could be, uh, actually set up, he could have a satellite office here where every city employee could pay their county taxes and city taxes at the same time. He said that did not sound doable at the time, but he would look into it. So just a little clarification there, that that has been, uh, brought to his attention.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, we're honored.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Commissioner Carroll, I don't like sitting down in that lineup there either for emissions. And I live in Franklin, I live in South. Thank you all.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, appreciate your information. Item eight C, discuss and or take action on the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget workshop schedule. CFO Darty?
Thank you, Mayor Darty. Um, I've met with, um, most of the department heads, other than Chief Ferris, I'm meeting with him tomorrow, but I did talk to him about these dates. So I would like to propose the following dates of, um, April fourteenth, April twenty-first, and April twenty-eighth. They are Monday evenings at five-thirty. I'd like to have, um, somewhere between a two and three-hour workshop and hit, uh, two departments that , uh, during that time, maybe have one. I don't know if we can do it in an hour, but maybe get it in an hour, hour and a half, and then do the other one.
Can you repeat those dates, please, sir?
Uh, April fourteenth, April twenty-first, and April twenty-eighth. Those should be Monday evenings.
I will not be in attendance.
I try to stay away from Tuesdays, and Thursdays, and Wednesdays, and Fridays.
Well, doesn't leave a lot. You know, one thing that we did do prior, one year, I thought we did something in the middle of the day. And then we've done another time, I believe that we did it before meetings on Thursday.
Yeah, we have Thursday the third and Thursday the seventeenth of April that might be captivated for a, um, workshop, being that it's already a scheduled date. If I can just ask, if we were, take those Mondays, which I do appreciate you looking where we're not already double booked, but personally, if I could come an hour or two early the day I'm already booked, would fit a schedule better. Um, does anyone have a comment on the third and the seventeenth meeting at five-thirty? Uh, as in, that would be acceptable?
By me.
Yeah, we have plenty of time that we need to schedule another one. We could, I mean, we got, before, we need to start worrying, so.
Well, we have the twentieth of March, we could get started. Do we, we don't have a workshop there already scheduled. Okay, how about the twentieth of March, the third of April, and the seventeenth of April at five-thirty? And that would be three with two departments each. Would that get us at least the coverage by the end of April? So that'll give you the timing in May?
Mayor, that's spring break.
The twentieth is, yes, ma'am, thank you for that note.
I'll be here, bud.
I'll be back by then, so I could, I could meet there.
Uh, I will also.
So we, the twentieth of March is fine with me.
Okay.
Okay, if the board is approval, I'd like to make a motion that the, um, budget workshop schedule be March twentieth, April third, April seventeenth at five-thirty.
Second.
Any discussion?
Here, here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, I, I...
Oh, what did I say?
All right, one quick question.
Mm, discussion?
Uh, can you be ready?
Yeah, that's...
The twentieth, May, uh, I think so. Um, what, what I'd like to propose is do police and fire on the twentieth, and possibly, um, uh, administration court and codes on the, um, third, and then streets and parks on the, uh, seventeenth.
If, I, I mean, if you can be ready, then that's, whatever order's okay with me. I, it just, we didn't, we kind of set our agenda, and, but the man with the facts has got to have a little time. Because we moved it up on him a month. So...
I, I think that'll work. I also wanted to get on the schedule, um, that now it's been my first go-around.
Can we vote on that?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion. Go ahead, sir.
What if what he had to say had to do with what we're voting?
We were in the middle, we were like halfway through a vote, so I had to finish it.
Okay. Uh, in talking with the department heads, um, this is pretty much a meeting of bringing what they want at, at these workshops. And then we have another skit round of workshops where, um, uh, it's, it's looking at the entire budget and, and how do we fit everything into the revenues. Is that, is that correct, how we're going to go about this, basically two cycles of workshops? And then we're trying to make sure everything, as much as nee- needs are met, and, and as many wants as, as can be met, met.
I would think presenting a budget, I mean, if I may answer your question, that presenting the budget of need?
Well, we're going...
And then a secondary of wants, or what you would consider strategic planning for their future projects.
Okay. I would like to, okay, I was under the impression, I just want to get my mind wrapped on the process, my mind wrapped around it, um, do we need to schedule further workshops in May, looking at the entire budget, where we're looking at each department in these earlier's with the department heads? Um...
Yes, we will have workshops in, focusing on the full budget in May. At, at this point, this is a preliminary schedule to get started. If we want to go into the April all the way through June, that's fine.
Okay.
Tom, I will make a recommendations, and maybe all the department heads might follow this. I would look, like them to look at ways to cut their budget. And then put their one, their necessities that they have to have. And then, you know, a, a future, like what they desire. And that gives me a better picture of what we have to have to survive, what they want, and what we look like. So, I just want to suggest that, since this is your first. They may want to just send a want list, but I would really would like to see, um, ways that we could cut our budget and our spending. So...
Thank you.
I, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I, I think most of you know that I have helped Tom a little bit, trying to, to give him some information. And if I'm remembering correctly, even though we seem to be having a hard time finding a, a citizen participant, y'all did kind of appoint me chairman of the finance committee. Uh, so, I'm, if the board would give concurrence, I'm happy to work with Tom in a, in a little expanded role and help him through this first budget cycle in terms of setting up the meetings, and what, which one of these meetings he needs to have what stuff prepared for, and, and that sort of thing. But I don't want to do that, I don't want to overstep my authority, since that committee really hasn't got started yet. So, I, I leave that to y'all, and I'm not going to vote one way or the other for that. That's something I will have to decide.
I think it's a tremendous idea. And you've got extensive experience in that field, so I can't imagine not utilizing it if you're willing to offer it.
Well, and I don't, I have a problem. I'm sure he would appreciate that. But, um, also, I would like, um, for y'all to take in my requests in consideration of how it is split and...
Yeah, I, I understand.
I do have a question. Was you going to give us more schedule, and we, we voted on the first three?
I, I had hoped to get, um, two meetings scheduled in May, but with that, we can wait on that. It's, that's no big deal.
Okay, because we, we will do the department, and then it begins to be the whole, and then it's the working out the details to then begin a proposed.
Right.
Okay? And I, I think being your first round, it is very helpful to have someone that, um, would be able to attend to your questions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, could we get that on the record?
That you are the chairman of the finance committee?
And that it's okay with the, at least three of the four of you that I participate at that.
I'll so move.
I'll agree with that, yes. Absolutely.
Any discussion?
Well, I don't think, can we, but, it's not a, a genuine...
I'm not asking, I'm not asking for a motion, I'm just wanting a concurrence. I heard concurrence from you and concurrence from, and I think I heard concurrence from...
You are the finance committee, so that would be the exact proper place for you to be acting and, uh...
Reason being is, when it comes for a vote, I do plan to vote. And I don't want to, I don't want an issue brought up that, well, you know what, he helped Tom build it, so he's voting on his own product. Because I'm not going to make those kinds of decisions. That'll be something that the city manager and Tom will make. I'm going to be in there for more for process. These are the kinds of things you include.
Um, I think that's fair, but as long as it is, like, you're in a clear, you're not in there to do the budget, you're there as a guidance. And, and in any way, Tom, don't let him do it, because he, he does know, and he probably would want to take it over. But it is your budget, and use his knowledge, um, to your good. But that's just my suggestion.
Any other discussion?
I wanted the concurrence. Thank you for making my point for me.
Well, you know, I, we, after a while, we do kind of know what, um...
Oh, that's, that's why I, that's why I asked.
We'll move along to D, discuss and or take action on recommendations from the BOC workshop. We had a workshop, uh, on Tuesday for the purpose of city manager candidates and discussion. We also had a workshop today for additional discussion, and then moved into the Fairview City projects. And I think we have a recommendation, um, Commissioner Busell, did you have a recommendation that you'd like to move forward on?
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion that the starting salary for our new city manager once selected is eighty thousand. And I, I wrote that down, and now I have misplaced the, the actual amount. Uh, eighty thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars.
And that was the ending salary for the past?
Yes.
Okay. Just for clarification.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Also, in the workshop, we had discussion about the, um, city manager candidates. And I had, uh, offered up that I would make a recommendation for a second interview, the second interview between, uh, Mr. Young and Mr. Hall. And I'm making a motion for the second interview to be entertained. There a second? There be no second, we move on. Are there any other recommendations that the board would like to present at this time?
Yes, ma'am, I have other motions. I would like to make a motion that the person that is selected for our city manager be offered a three-year contract incorporating all of the city ordinances that already established the items, such as use of a car, vacation, entitlement to health benefits, retirement, and, um, seems like there's something else.
Severance?
Severance pay, thank you, ma'am.
Clarification, did you mention the car?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, we have a first and second discussion. In my discussion in the workshop, we did comment about the charter does read that there is a one-year, um, implied contract. So at that point, I feel that that one-year implied contract is set there for a purpose, and I will not be favorable of a three-year contract. All other terms are already current ordinances, and I'm not opposed with any of the other statements that was made.
Um, I will repeat, if I have the floor, um, for discussion pers, I'm, I'm sounding like a broken record, because they've heard this twice in two workshops. But, um, I will let you know that, um, I am against a contract, not for the reason that I think the city manager, um, needs a contract. I think some of the problems that we've had prior was because the city manager did not have that safety net. But, in actuality, we give a year guarantee. And I feel like at the end of that year, we could then negotiate a contract, um, with that employee. And out of respect, because it was tried several times for the prior city manager, I do not think we should give this city manager a contract. So I'm staying firm with that. It came up. It could have happened, the majority, you know, we work off a majority. They could have given him one, and they, you know, didn't. I wasn't for it, but I will admit, sometimes being new, a new commissioner, and feeling like it was railroaded, you know, that first meeting, which is probably how, you know, it's done. But then it was such elaborate offer that I was not, um, for it. And then we had several negotiations. And at the end, it came down to one that I could live with, because we already had all the ordinance. It was four-year, I was fine with it. But for some reason, it never came back through the, um, people that were driving the contract. Um, so I feel like, in essence, a lot of mine stemmed back from having to pay as a citizen's watching. We had to buy, uh, Mr. Deck out of the contract. So, and I just feel like that I'm just going to stand my ground on this one, even though we learned. I definitely would want to consider a contract at the three-year, and, um, I would definitely vote for that. Because I feel like when you don't have a contract, the city manager is always uneasy. They worry about the power of three votes. And, um, so I do feel like now I've learned through... And so I do feel like now I've learned through this process and a contract is necessary. But I'm not for offering it right out of the water. I think they should put their time in a year. And if we feel like at that time that it was a mutual good fit, then at that time, we can present the contract that we desire.
Other discussion?
I think I have the floor. Initially, when we had a meeting the other day, I was opposed to a contract. I don't have a contract. I've listened to a lot of the constituents out there that feel like, and they have convinced me to a certain point, that even for the first year, knowing that you've only got a year to perform, still puts the same pressure on you from individuals putting pressure on you within the city manager's position. For that reason, I've changed my mind about a three-year contract, beginning at the very first of the initiation process of when it was approved, whoever that may be. And going from there, it does take the impression of the city manager not being able to freely do their job. It gives you the, it gives him the opportunity to perform his job without having to worry about all the insinuations that certain members are putting undue pressure on him. And he is worried about his job. He don't have to worry about it for three years unless he does something to violate that trust and your answer for termination. Same thing for the first year. City charter, they tell us we cannot terminate the city manager for a year unless it's through mild feces. Am I correct? Or misfeces.
Or non-feces.
I don't know what the, but it is. That we can't do it. We just cannot. It's impossible for us to do. The same situation occurs if we have a contract. We can break and break that contract at any time for the same reasons. So I think we're given the conception that the public has that without a contract, the person's under undue pressure to do what we want them to do individually rather than have the option to do their job. So I'm flip-flopping a little bit from the other day because I have been convinced that we need that to do so. I'm for a three-year contract, starting with the date that it's announced. Or after that, we go to committee to discuss all the final benefits.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, the item E, eight E.
I got one more.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. I make a motion that should the selectee incur moving expenses, that the individual be reimbursed up to ten thousand dollars for those moving expenses.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm against that amount. I don't think we offered the other city manager and nobody's cost of living has gone up or moving and we haven't checked that price. But I feel like that a ten thousand is a little steep. I'd like to see it brought down to maybe five thousand. And no, I haven't moved, so I don't know the exact cost. But it's generous of us to offer a moving.
Commissioner Bissell, how much did you say the other evening it cost you to move from Texas to here?
Well, that was in 1999 and it did include the sale and purchase of a house expenses and a small time in temporary quarters, but it was around sixty thousand dollars. Is what? I was reimbursed.
Yeah, he was reimbursed, not the whole moving.
No, I mean, there was out-of-pocket expense that I had to pay.
Other discussion?
I would like to make amendment to the motion for the moving expense to be five thousand.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the amended motion?
I still, I mean, you know, originally, Mr. Hyatt came and there, he wasn't given one, but he came back later once he knew costs and y'all gave additional money. I think somebody, a new city manager could do that. And so, and if that time, if we wanted to, not knowing how much they're going to cost, if they were already going to, there's only, out of the candidates, we only had one that would move. So there may not be that expense. So I would like to just stick low and as a board, if we'd like to readdress it, we could.
Other discussion?
Just a clarification. We had three of the four candidates that would have to move.
Well, moving to City of Fairview, but not a long distance like what he was referring, your move from Texas. Like the more farther you move, the more it would cost. So if we're moving from Bellevue or somewhere local, it may not cost as much.
That's true, but we do have three that would have to move.
In the workshop, you stated that Andrew asked for how much? Fifteen thousand?
No, no, no. Andrew asked for a combined package, I believe, that was around fifteen. It did have some other items in there, so I don't, I don't, I don't remember exactly, but it was around fifteen. I did make a motion for five and twenty-five hundred was approved.
So that my five would include a increase of the cost since then if y'all gave him twenty-five hundred, we would double that to five thousand. So it would take in consideration that was so many years ago.
I'm comfortable with five thousand.
Other discussion on the amended motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The original motion was moving expenses of ten thousand?
But it's superseded by the amendment.
There be no vote there? Okay, any other recommendations from the workshop?
I worked my list. Thank you very much.
Item E is discuss and/or take action on hiring a permanent city manager position. I ask for a motion from the floor to name a preferred candidate.
Just to make sure we click on the motion, you asking for nominations or?
A motion from the floor for preferred.
Make a motion, we conduct a vote with all four candidates interviewed in nomination.
Second.
Restate your motion?
I make a motion, we conduct a vote with all four candidates we interviewed in nomination.
Dooley, second. Discussion? Mr. Cantrell, I was prepared to ask for a roll call vote in the motion as stated. Is a roll call vote still appropriate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Bissell?
Hall.
Commissioner Carroll?
Hall.
Commissioner Sutton?
Hall.
Commissioner Johnson?
Hall.
My vote was for Mr. Young. I'd like to state a congratulations. Once we have an affirmative vote, I suggest that the attorney be in direction of working out the details with the candidate. This could be in the form of a formal employment agreement, which has already been discussed in motions this evening as part of the terms, and put the terms of the employment set forth in a resolution. And that would allow us to bring that forth in the March 20th Board of Commission meeting for a vote.
Ma'am, let me be sure I understand. You want the contract in the form of a resolution or you want a resolution adopting the contract?
Well, it could be a formal agreement. I'll ask the board for direction. A formal employment agreement or the simple terms of the employment set forth in a resolution. What would be the wishes of the board?
Could you restate that, please, ma'am?
A form of a formal employment agreement, which is how we have been discussing the matter, or simplify the terms of employment set forth in a resolution.
I think we need an employment agreement in order to fulfill the contract.
Which is as we've discussed, so that would be the direction, sir. Okay?
Mayor who will be designated to provide feedback to the candidates that were not selected, should they wish feedback?
I believe, let's see. The candidates will be notified by myself and I will ask Jeff for direction from MTS of how that is standardly done.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a statement? I don't know if it's appropriate and I'm sure you'll tell me if it's not. But one of the other candidates did come to the meeting and I really appreciate that. And, you know, even though we did not do a lot of discussion, but during the workshop, you were really a favorite, so we narrowed it down. So I just kind of want to thank you for your interest in Fairview. I know you have a commitment here and your skill set is amazing and we, you know, really appreciate you taking the time.
Yes, sir. You're welcome to come to the podium. That would be best for the recording. Thank you, Mr.
And bring your better, bring your better half with you too. Come on, come on.
No, I just want to say I really appreciate being considered. I think Fairview is a great place. Y'all got a lot of great people here, including my, our family. And, you know, it's, it was an honor. And I also want to say that I appreciate your deliberation. And I really came tonight to really tell y'all that I support whatever decision you made. I support the one you made. So I think it's great. I think it's, I think y'all have done a great job and I just appreciate being considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, we didn't, we didn't actually ask for any discussion before that vote and I had some prepared things I would like to say at this time. And they were, first, it was, it's about Mr. Umber himself. And in watching the recorded interviews, I think that he came well-prepared to the interview and I was giving him great consideration throughout the workshop. Commissioner Bissell came up with a plan that seemed like it might be a win-win for the city and that we have a codes director position that is available. And that seems like that is possibly his expertise. And while I do not think this board has the right to put him into that position because that's not our jurisdiction, I, I hope that he would consider, if he's wanting to move here, actually applying for that position when it is posted. That night at the nature center, I interviewed Ms. Casky for about an hour. We sat at the table and had dinner and asked her a few questions. And one question I asked her was, how did she see herself fitting in with the community here and being part of the community? And she stated to me something that I thought was very troubling and that she did not want to take part in the public aspect. She thought that she needed to be in her office getting her work done. She, I think, realized that that isn't the answer that I was expecting to get and she changed that probably 10 minutes later and said she would go to the occasional football game. So that eliminated her at that point from me giving her consideration. Since that night, I have been in contact with Mr. Young over emails and we discussed that night after the meeting. And I, I asked him about him leaving his employment in Massachusetts to come down here without having a job. And I said, that must be hard on your wife. She has a full-time career in the PhD program and she must be working. And he made the statement to me that neither one of them worked and he left it at that. And I thought, well, the Youngs must not need employment. And I emailed him a series of questions and he answered. And he apologized for leaving it like that and the impression if it was left with me or any board member or any citizen. And he did say that he did need to be the breadwinner. While Vanderbilt is providing her with a full scholarship, they do provide her with an annual stipend as well that pays for some of their living expenses. It pays for her car payment and insurance, he said in the email. Another question I asked him was how many other jobs did he apply for since he's been here in Nashville? He listed five other cities, one, of course, being here. One in McMinnville that just closed last Friday that he does not know about. One that was in Forest Hills that they put a city manager administrator in there back in July. So he couldn't get there in time. He couldn't leave his current employment. He listed two others, the city of Smyrna, the town of Smyrna and the town of Thompson Station, our sister city here in Williamson County. He made the finals in Smyrna. He made the top five. This week, earlier in the week, I spoke with Mayor Mary Reid of Smyrna and asked her why she did not select Mr. Young. And several of the things that she said coincided with things I already had going in my head and that they were nervous about him leaving a job of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to travel with his wife to come here and that if she decided to move, he might move on a whim just because she wanted to go somewhere. If he would leave a job as such, then he would probably do it again. I don't know whether he would or not, but that was a concern I had and they shared that concern. They ended up hiring a local candidate from Smyrna. They said that it was less of a learning curve. He knew the community and he had connections with the county and state level already. Then I spoke with Mayor Corey Napier of Thompson Station. And this was really eye-opening to me. He told me, and Mr. Young had already told me this in the email, he was not even selected for an interview at our sister city here in our county. He told me that Jeff Broughton with MTS picked their top six for them. They didn't go through. They had 40 or 50 applicants and Jeff Broughton brought in their top six. Mr. Broughton didn't even have him in their top six. They had five local to middle Tennessee candidates and one from West Virginia. The, the board itself cut it down to three and they said that at that time, Jeff bowed out from MTS. They had the gentleman from West Virginia with a city about twice their size. He said a little less than 6,000 people. They had the lady that is the current assistant city administrator for the city of Columbia in Murray County and the former mayor and city administrator from Goodletsville. They said that they gave tremendous consideration to the former mayor and the city administrator because he was mayor for some years and then he was later hired as city administrator. And they said that they were giving him consideration because he knew both sides of it. They ended up selecting the gentleman from West Virginia. For those that don't know, the city of, town of Thompson Station is going through some problems with TDEC, with their failing sewer systems. And this gentleman had extensive wastewater experience at the federal and state level as they discharged their affluent into the Chesapeake Bay. They said that was the deciding factor for them and that's why they hired him. If it had not been for that, they said they would have gone with the man that had served on a board and was the city manager. That brings us to Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall's father served and loved this town, the people and the potential he saw in the future. That seed has been nurtured by Mr. Hall for many years throughout his life and he cared for that vision with great integrity, action and service on many levels. His participation in leadership and most importantly, his prudent wisdom have been foundational to all the modern developments and growth. foundational to all the modern developments and growth in recent years. Mr. Hall's personal commitments to his company's employees for so many years, I believe, kept him from a deeper calling in his life. The manner in which he respects and desires to work with people is not only inspiring, it's productive, and he knows how to get the job done. He's not only a people person, but he shows a trait that not many people my age possess, and that's humility. This coincides with his attitude of servant hood, which is exactly what the city manager does: he serves. Mr. Hall knows exactly what it takes. He's worked on both sides. Anyone that's worked tirelessly on a campaign truly knows what's going on around them, beyond the fact that for several months, he has done an incredible job proving to us that he is fully capable. A former elected official is, in my eyes, equal to the amount of education. They truly know how to work with the public and would know how to effectively work with a board since they were one of them. Mr. Hall is all about raising the standard. We are honored to have him, and I hope he will accept the offer to become not only Fairview City Manager, but my expectation is that the bar for future city managers is about to be raised. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Good comments. Eight, F. Discuss and/or take action on recommendations from the Park Commission. Try to get through these. Okay, the first recommendation from the Park Board is the recommendation from the Park Commission to the Board of Commission for discuss and/or approval of Bowie Lake Road Streetscape Plan. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Second recommendation from the Park Commission to the Board of Commission is to engage an engineer to conduct an estimate cost and plan layout for an ADA plan of approximately 1,300 feet on the lower Lob-Lally Loop. What are the wishes of the board? And a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
What are they talking about? Is coming off of the other side of the dam and just going down Lob-Lally?
The lower level, that's the more straight, right before the curve, which was presented to us by, I'm going to say Keith, but it might have been Kevin, presented to us as one of the options, and it is about a 1,300-feet span, but that would be then, as the engineer delivered back, of where the grade is proper. And the discussion was that the lower Lob-Lally was the most level to try to bring people into the park with an ADA surface. And there are alternatives and options that they're looking at for the engineer to have the cost much better than what we were presented before.
So all we're doing at this point is getting an engineer to draw us a plan?
Engaging an engineer to conduct the estimate cost and plan of an ADA. Yes, sir.
And Will can't do that? The engineers we have, Grigs and Mahoney, they can't do that?
If that would be who we would, the city manager would take the direction of the approval of the board to engage the engineer, and if it be the engineer, it would be his choice.
It'd be my choice.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, first and second, other discussion?
What kind of cost are we looking at for the engineer? I don't want it to be like we've done in the past, suggest projects spend thousands, thousands of dollars on engineers and then just throw it away. I'd like to have an estimate cost up before we move forward with it.
Go ahead.
I agree with you, too, Mr. Commissioner Sutton. I will do my best to try to come up with an estimated figure.
You made a comment about Will being in the area on other projects. Can he gather the information that Keith had and possibly do an in-house estimate for us? Because the plan's already been kind of laid out, but he does have to work with that new material we found that was very inexpensive and acceptable to ADA.
Right. He'll be here Tuesday night, and I'll get the information from Keith and let him look at it and give us an estimate.
Okay.
I agree with Commissioner Sutton. I think that we've already paid so much in engineer fees for the other that we ended up saying, "Get back the grant." So I would hate to see, unless it was something we were really serious about, us just jumping off the edge and paying for more fees. So I definitely would like a dollar amount before, and, but I know there are several projects going on in the community, so maybe if we can get it all together, just restating what was already said, but giving you my...
Now I can call you City Manager Hall.
Thank you, sir.
Centrum, City Manager Hall. I'd like to look back and see if we still have the engineering designs and cost factors for the original ADA layout for the Lake Vance Trail around the park there. We went from $160,000, which was approved by this board, to an outrageous figure of $600,000, and I don't see how it's possible. So I'd like to take a look at those plans, too, and have him look at that if we're going to just do a general outline, to see what it would be. Because I, my theory on that is, is that park was left to everybody in this city, and just because you have a handicap and a disability, you shouldn't be denied access to more, as much as we can give you. I know we can't build trails throughout the whole park for handicapped, because this would be not feasible, but it sure would be nice to know what this park looks like from the other side of that lake. So if you could just ask him to do that at the same time, bring that back to us, I appreciate it.
Well, let me clarify there. That could be a cost for him looking at it, which is not part of the motion. So I just want to do a clarification there, because if his, if his statement from the other commissioner's request is to ask the engineer how much he would charge for the motion of an engineer to conduct a cost of an ADA plan to the lower Lob-Lally Loop, then you would be getting back to us an estimate from the engineer.
Okay.
Then I'd like to make a amended motion to that.
To the recommendation from the Park Board?
Yes.
Okay.
To ask for that information at the same time.
Second.
Discussion?
I don't, I, kind of what I see in this whole thing is, basically, we are gonna go back and look at something we've already looked at. So I do think that would be a vital thing to go ahead and have the drawing of the original. Now, I know this is different. It's not exactly what the original motion was, but there was money spent. So I, what I would like to discuss is, how serious are we about this? Because I don't want to keep spending money on a project that, you know, we're not gonna really do. So my thought process is, I lean towards Commissioner Sutton as, let's review what we have and see what of that will work. I don't know exactly if that's what you're saying, but...
Well, it is, and the reason I brought it up is 1,300 feet is almost a quarter mile. That's, that's a lot of dirt footage of pavement.
We're not speaking about pavement. It's, it's a gravel by, uh, a mat.
It's acceptable by ADA, so it's the same, whichever way it goes, whichever material we use, it'd be acceptable for that, so.
Okay. How much does he charge an hour to look at stuff? Do you know?
Mayor, I really don't know right now, but I'll find that out first thing in the morning.
Because I feel like what we're, what we're doing is, I've made a motion for him to give us a plan.
Right.
And the, the concern from the commissioners is, how much will he charge us to give us a plan?
Okay.
And the amended motion seems to be, go put him to work to look at a plan, and we don't have an idea how much he's going to charge us to look at that. That would be my concern.
Mayor, if I could make a suggestion?
Okay.
Why don't we withdraw all the motions? I think the city manager understands what we want, and that is an estimate of what it costs to draw up his plans on both projects, and that we defer the actual decision until he can provide us either at the 20th or the first meeting in April, what our cost is going to be to get actual plans drawn. And then we can, then we can decide, do we want to pay that or not?
His amended motion is to look at the current drawn plans and give us a new estimate with the new material offered. We have two different things.
But if we withdrew them all, I think that...
I don't disagree.
The city manager got all that. He wrote a lot of things down. I mean, he'd just be doodling like I did, but...
I got it down, though.
The bottom line is, is that he, I think he's got it. So if we just deferred it and didn't try to complicate it with a bunch of amendments and, and motions, we might just, he might just get us what we want, because I think he understands.
Yes.
Am I right, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
I'm kind of guessing at you here.
We have a second withdrawn from the amendment.
I would like to discuss still.
We have a withdrawal. We're not in discussion at this point. Do we have a withdrawal of the amended motion or not?
What were you through with the discussion?
He withdrew his second, so we're back to...
He was still discussing part of the first one.
That would put us back to the first motion for discussion.
I won't withdraw my second until you discuss. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Without a second, I'd, I'd have to...
You withdraw? We're in discussion of the first motion?
I'm not so sure that I understand. I just want clarification. You're just wanting the old plan and cost analysis brought for comparisons. You're not saying you want to do the whole thing.
We don't want to use the engineer's cost factor and everything involved in it, which is much cheaper than having somebody lay the plans out and redesign.
So even if he gave us a section, like, we could just use that section if we just wanted to do that Lob-Lally Loop section, because was that not, you're looking at me funny, was that not in the original whole circle of the, like, it wasn't?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, wow.
It was, the original was to do the entire circle all the way around the lake with the bridge and things involved in it, too. And, and that, those plans are there somewhere to be looked at. Matter of fact, it took three years to get them looked at.
Okay. Well, then, I would like to clarify that I would like the engineer to take a look of what the planning commission has suggested also.
Park Board.
Yeah, Park Board, sorry. Park Board, also. That's just...
The original motion on the floor is, the Board of Commission is asked to approve to engage an engineer to conduct a cost estimate and a plan for an ADA for the lower Lob-Lally Loop. There's a second. Further discussion?
I remove my second.
We have a motion. Is there a second? There'd be no second. The recommendation fails, and...
I make a motion that we defer this until the first meeting in April, which I don't remember the date. And in that, between now and then, that the city manager talk to the city engineer or his designate, and get us an estimate of what the plans would cost to deal with the Park Board's recommendation of Lob-Lally, and what it would cost under the same guidelines in terms of materials to substitute those materials into the ADA plans that have already been drawn for ADA path around Lake Van.
That'll be April 3rd, Mr. Commissioner.
April 3rd.
Second.
They'd be deferred till April 3rd with those instructions.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next recommendation from the Park Commission is for the Board of Commission to entertain approval for engaging an engineer to conduct an ADA access plan from the Nature Center to Joanne's Classroom. Motion made. Is there a second?
Discussion.
Second, discussion?
I think they've already done that. I think, uh, maybe Keith could add to that, but I thought that our city manager could. I thought that Will had already come out and done that.
Would you like to share it to Manager Hall?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I had Will out here yesterday on some other things, so I try to take advantage of it when he's here to get as much as I can done.
Wonderful.
Uh, and he actually looked at it yesterday and got a good feel for what needs to be done. And one of the things that we're going forward with is possibly a grant to replace the LPRF grant that I'll reapply for in April. Got to apply for it by April 11th, so hopefully that I can apply this particular trail to Joanne's Classroom under that grant, so. And it will have to be surveyed, but we'll hold off on surveying until we know something more about the grant.
Other discussion?
So at this time, there's no need for an engineer's report on it? Tell what you're telling me.
Basically, he just looked at it yesterday, and he told me that we would need a survey on it when he started, before he could engineer it, because of the way it would star-step down, you know, for it to be handicap accessible. So without spending a whole lot of money yesterday, I just briefly took him by there and showed him the, the trail, and he's got an idea of what needs to be done, and hopefully we can get it under this grant.
Okay, to turn in the grant, you will have to have a project and an engineer drawing, correct?
Uh, we'll, right now, it'd just be a letter with, with that recommendation, and once we get guidance back from the grant, then we'll go forward then with the engineering phase. My goal is to, any, the engineering that we have that's a grant is to where we can bill back the engineering fees. So that's the way that I'm approaching those right now.
So the motion is for the Board of Commissions to engage an engineer to conduct an ADA access plan from the Nature Center to Joanne's Classroom. So we're looking for approval from the board to engage the engineer for the plan.
Yes, ma'am, at the proper time. I don't think we'd need a motion tonight if you want to defer this until I know more about what the grant's going to do. But we are moving forward with the Joanne Classroom, you know, and, and if the grant won't cover it, then we'll have to come back with an estimate of what it would cost to do, do the trail to Joanne's Classroom.
A motion to defer until the April 3rd meeting with the same general instructions as the previous two requests.
Second.
We have a amended motion for deferment. There be any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is for the Park Commission making a recommendation for approval from the Board of Commission to reburn the area done two years ago in 2012, plus the dome area, plus Section 1 through 6.
Move to approve.
Second.
First and second, discussion?
I'm not sure that, I mean, we had the workshop and we discussed. I'm not sure that I'm 100% comfortable without having Mike Berkeley, and then, I don't know, is Keith still here? Because there was some discrepancy of whether or not, whether or not that we should do the burn that so, so soon in that section. I know that the city manager reported that it wasn't your, you didn't think it was necessary to do the burn in that area. I'm not against the burn at all. I know they need to be done, but I just wanted your opinion on that one section, the reburn from two years ago.
Well, my, my concern was that there, there are some hardwoods in there right now, and listen, and here we go, back to Dwight and Mike saying that it burnt, it burned hot, where I'm afraid that if we go in there and reburn that section, that we're going to kill any hardwood that's in there right now. That would be my concern. But that's going off of stuff that Mike and Dwight, and I know we were talking about the other forester that was here actually being the person we're going to listen to or get his recommendations from.
Okay, and the mayor shared with us in the workshop that it is already a recommendation on the burn that you do... Okay, and the mayor shared with us in the workshop that it is already a recommendation on the burn that you do. And was it the land? You can fill in, but the land, I don't know if it was in conservation or, it was?
Tennessee Land Trust.
Okay, the land trust. Okay, so it said every three years they recommend. We have lagged in doing that. So what would your opinion be now that you know that we're really close to that three-year mark? Should we go ahead and do it now before we plant? I just want your thought process.
I was obviously not in the park board meeting this last Monday, but nor was I at the previous burn for that area. And it's hard to give a recommendation on when you have an expertise, you know, someone that has that expertise behind him.
I think that's a great point, Keith. And basically, we have a gentleman that's telling us that it needs to take place. So I can't imagine not taking his recommendation. He says it needs to happen, and I would say it needs to happen. He's in that position for a reason.
I just think that we had enough confusing data over the years and want to make sure that that's something. I mean, I think it's a valid point. We already have hardwoods and stuff. But I know in the park board meeting, there was mentioned that, and it was not, it was through a citizen, that Mike Berkeley said the pine straw would serve the same, oh, let's see, I'm so good at the tree, well, not purpose, but anyway, that's a good enough word. But the same purpose as it all. And I'm just really curious, before we do it, that we're doing it for the right reasons.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to have the fire chief come to the podium real quick. I would like him to explain to us and the public what he would do to protect the park from a lightning strike and how he could keep these hardwoods from burning.
If that lightning strike occurs right now in the middle of the night, and we don't know it till somebody sees that orange glow, then half that park's going to be gone.
Absolutely.
That park is so overgrown. And with no apologies to Mike, he's got initials after his name. I got initials after my name, but it's firefighting. You might have a guy fishing two lakes. I got a PhD in fishing. Well, I've been fishing this lake for 50 years. Who do you listen to? So it happens to be the forester Dwight was from Oregon. They got a few trees in Oregon, and that's where I got my start in the fire service. And they, yes, used to make the mistake of putting out those fires. And years ago, we found out decades that you let it burn until it threatens a building or something like that. Then you put it out. And I was here last, two years ago when they burnt in the spring, and the guy in charge of the burning said it didn't go as well as it should have. We need to come back in the fall and burn the same area because it's so overgrown.
Right.
And if you've ever been out west to those big old growth forests, you can drive down the forest between the trees. Matter of fact, some of the parks, that's the way it is. Here, you have trouble walking in between the trees. So I'm a little bit prejudiced because the park is my favorite. I mean, I love the park and I get to work next to it every day. And I hate to see it, one of the best things that could happen is to burn that thing all the way over. In the 30 years from now, we'd have a beautiful park. I'm not willing to wait that long. So the park should be burnt, and this is based on experience. 50 acres a year, you burn the park every 15 years that way, and it doesn't allow the overgrowth, including the dome. Burn that grass. If you all know, the Indians used to burn grass every year. It comes back green. Next time you see a big black patch on the interstate where somebody's thrown out a cigarette and it's burnt, watch what happens a month later to that patch. It's just as green as it can get.
Greener than everything around it.
And that dome will come back with the native grasses, and it will drive out the invasive plants. And I know Mike's probably sitting at home watching me going, "I don't know what you're talking about." Anyway, my recommendation is, yes, we burn the park on a regular basis, get that thing healthy because it is so overgrown by trees that were not even native to Tennessee.
But you mean control burning, right?
Absolutely. And my compliments to the forestry. I had not been present until two years ago. I had seen them do it elsewhere, but actually been present from start to finish. They're experts, absolute experts in what they do.
And there is a tremendous difference between an arborist and a forester. And we love what Mike does for us, but he is not a forester. Without question, this needs to be burned. And I like your plan.
I have one more comment too, on the same subject. It's not specific on the agenda, or I can come back under staff comments. The fire department is opposed to the deadfall plan, to felling these trees, including the limbs, and leaving that deadfall out there. There are trees deadfall out there from the 1990s ice storm. That deadfall will be there for decades. And it's going to add to the fire load. If you're going to cut down trees, get them out of there.
Absolutely.
This also going to hinder you from fighting a fire in the Vanuatu.
And we've started a program two years ago. They brought a D4 in there and widened one of the trails to allow us to drive down with the brush truck those trails. The plan was to, every time that they come, they would additionally widen the trails. They would write it off as training for their dozers, their dozer operators. They didn't charge us to do it. So that plan should also come out to where eventually we can drive through the entire park. And remember, and you answered your question, what would I do if the park got on fire? Forest fires, you don't go put them out. You draw a line down here somewhere and it burns up to it.
That's right.
Could you tell me of your knowledge of the adopted 2008 burn policy for the city of Fairview?
Not familiar with that.
It was shared with the park board that in 2008, the Board of Commission approved a burn policy. It's just not necessarily been followed. So at this point, you know, I feel like we're getting back on a track that had already been prescribed for the protection of the park and its future.
And that may have been where...
It was a 2020, the 2020 plan?
I'm trying to reach back in to some of the old minutes up here, is that the forester used to charge 50 bucks an acre, and I think the price went to 250 an acre after the crash. And I think that's when we stopped. But I go homie to that.
Would you please try to get with City Manager Hall and to be able to pull together a kind of a collaboration? Because his initiative of moving forward, your support and participation with volunteers, and Keith Paisley, the director in community service, that particular burn policy is maybe something that we can continue or we can revise, but as you stated, it needs to be done for the health of the park.
Should be done every year. If you do 50 acres a year with a 750, you've burnt the entire park every 15 years. And that's what the forester recommended. He says, "Come in here every 15 years and just burn off the undergrowth." He says you'll have a beautiful park in about 20 years. Now, this is for, most of it's for...
But not if we pile a bunch of stuff on top of it.
Do not let that deadfall lay there. That's a huge fire load. Can I answer your questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a printed park map that I either gave the forester or he did not give me back. Do you have that? Do you have that, Mr. Hall?
I'm looking for it.
I think you took it with you.
The reason I'm highlighting that is because it had section 1 through 6, and I wanted confirmation from the fire chief as well as the commission as we're in discussion, that the 1 through 6 are the areas identified along the Crowcut Road, Dice Lampley?
Wayne, you did have that because I handed it back. So, and if we do find it, will we put it up on the screen so people can see? The light is right there by you, Tom, or the section. But let's see if we find it before you pull down the...
It's important that the forester has it, and it's important that y'all are all working together because I know everyone has the interest of the park at heart. But the form was an exhibit as part of my recommendation, and he obviously took it with him.
Mm-hmm. Liked it.
He was impressed.
Is it that printed copy, the black and white there? Nope.
That was colored.
Let me make sure I didn't steal it. But I remember giving it back. Nope, okay.
No, he took mine. That was numbered. Just for full clarification, we want open and transparent communication. That doesn't, that is not being facetious. That is a genuine comment of making sure that what we're discussing is fully understood. And again, this is under recommendation of the state forester as well as affirmative from Fire Chief Cooper. No one fall asleep now. Well, it sounded good. Oh, there we go.
Upside down.
Flip it around. Okay, can you point out, you see area 7? Can you point that out? All right, area 7, that's an identified area of some of the test site of the 3.2 acres. That is a test site for the 9060 zero basal cut. The area of the dome is in the yellow at the top, and that is a part of the re-burning of the burn project that was done in 2012. And then the dome area, which was expressed about the prairie grass. If you can widen it out, Keith, take it around. Let's look at the, the sections 1 through 6 that was proposed is along the roadway, which would not, which would be gotten to by, you have a main road. You didn't point out there. Okay, area 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 for a burn. Chief, do you have a comment on that section area?
Which one?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Well, up in 7 is what we burnt two years ago. And my proposal, and in conversation with the forester Dwight, and he agreed, is that we additionally expand the dome areas to where there's more dome, more prairie, if you would, which would involve taking down some of the trees. But as far as which areas we would burn first, I don't, I don't think it makes a difference because it's all overgrown.
This would be working in collaboration with the forester that was here today?
I don't, was it Dwight here today?
No, it's Mr. Jeff Piot. He is the state forester.
I worked with Dwight.
Yeah, he's retired.
Well, Dwight has?
Yes, sir.
Oh, bless his heart. Okay. No, I have not worked with Jeff.
Okay, so with that statement, that's kind of the areas I want to make sure that is in in understanding of the motion to reburn the area done two years ago in 2012, plus the dome, plus section 1 through 6 prior to the test site cut, which applies to 7.
That's almost the whole park.
Now, I want to point out the green areas is the pine. The brown areas is where it was cleared. Does anybody remember the date? 89? 98? The date it was cleared to where he said that, the forester said those are oaks that are growing back as a solid hardwood forest.
I think it was 89.
Okay. All right, other discussion?
So the motion is to burn 7 properties?
All at one time?
The area, well, that's under the...
They'll stagger it.
How about how long? Are we doing it in a year or...
He could do the 7 in a day or in a few hours, he said.
A few hours, and as long as the weather's right. He's got to get the conditions right. If you've got a 10 to 15 mile an hour wind, that's okay because that fuels the fire. If you go over that, then we're taking a chance of spreading the fire, so.
My recommendation, Mayor and the board, was be to, the exact areas they're going to burn, let the foresters, the guys that do the burning, pick those out. Because they're probably going to pick between a creek and a, you know, something like that. We can say, okay, we'd like generally area 1 burnt, but let them pick the exact orders. That's the word I'm looking for. Let's don't do that for them. And then eventually, of course, eventually, yes, burn the whole park.
These were, these were from Mr. Piot's observation.
And for clarification, I'm for the burn. That's not it. I was just questioning the re-burn is necessary. I know that for our park's livelihood and survival and health long-term, that this is a necessary process that we haven't been doing. It's just my question is, was it necessary? Because there's been so many conflicting stories over the years that, you know, just making sure that we are on the same page and know what we're voting for.
How many acres is all of that? When the cost calculated by acre?
250, I believe, Chief said.
And that could have changed. That was just going back several years ago.
So just roughly, just guesstimating it, I would say it's probably 400 acres, 300 acres.
That wasn't discussed. I don't know.
I mean, just looking at the green splotches versus the brown splotches, it looks to me to at least be 40, 50% of the total 750 acres, which would make it somewhere around 350 to 375. At $250 an acre, we're talking about $100,000.
Good point.
Here again, I believe in estimates in order.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not against the burn, and I think we should have been doing a little bit all the time. But given some of our experiences with some of our conversations, when we're talking about that much money, I just want to make sure we all understand how much money we're talking about out there because if we...
Changed my mind quick.
If we, if we go at this, you know, we might could do one now and then do one after the first of the fiscal year or two next year. But it's, you're talking $100,000 here.
Commissioner Vassell, in my conversations two years ago with the foresters, they only burn in the spring.
Okay. Well, one of them said we should burn again in the fall, so I...
When the area we burnt in the spring two years ago, he said we need to come back in the fall and burn that same area, not another area.
So they burn so they can get the regrowth during the year.
And because it was so undergrowth, it didn't kill off as much as he wanted to. But I would, I would never propose we're going to burn the entire park in one year, shelling a hundred grand. I don't...
Well, if we decided to do that, the only place that money's available to us is in the park fund. I can tell you that, what limited I've worked, what limited I've worked with the Tom on it.
Because the idea is to burn the park on a regular basis, so you wouldn't want to come back every year, burn a little bit. That thing's driving me crazy, isn't it?
About to break into the John Travolta here.
It's to burn on a regular basis over a period of 15 years. So you would divide your $100,000 up by 15 is what you'd do. I'll go fix that in a second.
Yeah, I have a, I mean, if that's the cost, I have a real problem with $100,000 and taking it out.
We're going to spread that out over a decade and a half, I would presume.
So the brown parts don't burn?
No, that's hardwood. You don't want to burn that.
But I'm not the expert. That's for the forester and the city manager.
I see you. I'm trying.
And the chief of, the fire chief and the chief of the park director to work all that out, under the recommendation of a forester.
And you're only burning the undergrowth off. You're not burning every tree down.
I wouldn't mind, and I don't, if the other board members would allow this. Jim is over there dying to say something, and he does have a lot of knowledge on the... there dying to say something, and he does have a lot of knowledge on the park. Would it be inappropriate to let him just say what he was going to say if it pertained to what we were talking about? Huh?
It's just about the information that Jack presented at the park board.
Okay.
And the two hundred and fifty dollars was not, it was more around twenty-five to thirty dollars, is what Jack said at the park board, or what I understood him saying. I could be, I could have been listening to something else or heard something that wasn't correct. The other thing that Jack said was they would come and burn all of these in one day.
And at that point, that's why I believe that the forester, leading, the city manager, and the department heads is where if we're approving that it needs to be done, money will not be spent by the city manager without our approval.
But I think that price is, the two hundred and fifty was a price I did set back during the recession, and money, they're not a lot of money now, but evidently that has to change sometime, as per Jack Kennedy in the park board meeting. I must think poor Jack, but I think they're still up there.
Well, thank you. That's very helpful as far as changing-
Big time.
Y'all, you threw me to the wind, but I'm back in the conversation.
Just adding up what I heard. Look at his pictures. I like pictures.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the last recommendation, the park board requests the board of commission approve under the recommendation of the tooth, of a Tennessee forester and the Tennessee conservation forester, that we look, okay, that we look for, that we look, I'm sorry, I wrote it wrong because that can't be right, that we look for Loblawli sixty to eighty basal count ID in sections one through six to be cut and extracted from a recommendation of a hired forester, and the sale of the timber would offset the forester and cutting expenses.
Move for approval.
Second.
So that's one through six, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Section, ID section one through six. We have a motion and a second discussion.
So we're going to log one through six, and we're going, we pick those because there's road access?
Yes, sir.
We're going to do that all at one time, or are we going to do that?
I'm sure they'll have to do it in phases, but whoever we contract with, we'll be able to discuss that within them. We have to hire the approved person.
In the workshop, if you recall, the gentleman stated that he would refer, and the city manager will have the list of the foresters to interview and hire for the purpose of direction, for them to then guide us under the recommendation on those sections one through six for the sixty to eighty basal count.
Keith, do you have any input here? Do you have anything you want us to consider?
So what are we doing on seven here, though?
Still, we have already asked.
Seven is your test site, the 3.2 acres, and then the additional part of seven has not been addressed. It's a part of the most populated area, and it's not been addressed of the additional ones that were originally presented in the thirty-eight acres.
Okay. Do we, and we don't know exactly how much these acres are, the one through six, yet.
Once identified by the forester, then that would be a point of the information gathered and given at that point.
And then the forester would obviously do the, the rest of the plan to be submitted to the land trust-
Yes, sir.
Same thing with the-
We would be under direction of the Tennessee conservation forester, Mr. Rodman, and then the Tennessee forester, Mr. Piott, and then the forester that's hired by the city of Fairview to give us recommendation.
Now, the, my understanding is the test site, we've already approved that, so it's going to the drop method. This is for one through six because there's road access, because that's one of the things at the park board I was really concerned about and questioning. But this is just that one through six. Then after that, we would have to determine the other areas around the, the busy parts of the park that we use in the, what's the word? Play area and the-
Heavy populated is the word they use, yes, ma'am.
That's the word I'm looking for. Heavy populated, so.
Which is probably the area we don't want the trees all just dropped.
Well, there, and there was that discussion of the visual, but when we did get the bid and talking through, they said they would drop them in a certain way, where they're not all crisscross and try to, you know, people will have to understand that to keep, you know-
We can, we still have the opportunity to change it.
Well, with it being the test site, the spirit of the word "test" is trying things. And at that point, after two years of processing from the necessity of the multiple reports from the forester, the 3.2 acres was then approved by the land trust and approved by the city and approved by the, if I don't speak for you, but the friends as far as the methods and the process to see how the testing turned out, so we can look at those options.
Yeah, and I hate to see us go backwards. I mean, we, it took us forever to decide on that. It's already scheduled. We may have to delay it because of the burn, but that's okay. He said, Wayne explained to us that it would, you know, he could possibly put it off for a week and still be okay. And you know what? If it didn't work, if we don't like it, it doesn't mean that we couldn't go back in and remove the trees. If it was such an eyesore that, you know, and the community, you know, was opposed to it, we could go back. But it, you know, we fought really hard for the, to keep it natural and that area not to bring the equipment, so. And I think we should stick with that.
And just a footnote, the gentleman, Mr. Mangram Lager, that is, has given a bid and is moving forward, he does have the opportunity of mules. That was not bitted or anything that we got a quote for, but he does have the opportunity, if we get to the place, that that is a necessity, and it's a consolidated need that we need to address that area, and we'll, we'll discuss it further. This is a process, and I think the collaboration of the park board, the tree board, the city, the staff, the commission, and the friends, and all the department that is involved, I, I think it's a, a work in progress. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for your patience on that. And now we're moving on to the discuss and or take action of recommendations from the tree board. Some of this may be redundant, so we'll talk it through, but it says the tree board recommends to the BOC to approve the revised Bowie Lake street scape plan with tree quantity increased to twelve red bud trees on public property and placement subject to the clearing of underground utilities, and retaining the wording from the original recommendation to use the tree bank funds as ordinance eight-twenty-two allows for the trees planted on public property.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Does that conform with what we've already approved?
Yes, sir.
We're going to watch real close on how the, the people that does the marketing and utility just try to keep it from getting on the sidewalks and then move on.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next recommendation from the tree board for the board of commission consideration for approval is in accordance with one of the duties of the tree commission as stated in title thirteen, section thirteen dash four oh four, sub four, to study the urban forest, including problems involving the city tree population, and seek ways to implement needed work. The tree board recommends the tree board, the tree planting and protection ordinance be amended to provide that on public properties within the city of Fairview, the Loblawli pine density standard of a basal area of sixty to eighty be adopted. What are the wishes of the board? Do I need to clarify or read again?
You kind of do. I'm sorry.
The tree board in accordance with one of the duties of the tree commission as stated in title thirteen, section thirteen dash four oh four, which is to study the urban forest, including problems involving the city tree population, and seek ways to implement needed work, recommends the tree planting and protection ordinance be amended to provide that on public properties within the city of Fairview, the Loblawli pine density standard of a basal area of sixty to eighty be adopted.
I don't know if I necessarily agree with-
Well, I think the forester did state that during the workshop, but I would like that in writing before we voted on it, so I'd make a motion to defer.
Second.
We have a first and second for deferment, and what would be the action item on the deferment you stated?
Just waiting on the, for the state forester to put that in writing to the city that that is the state's recommendation.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this is an item for codes. The tree, the tree board recommendation, the tree board recommends to the codes department to issue formal notice to PGM properties that they are in non-compliance with the Fairview landscape ordinance in response to Bowie Commons, and that this item will be placed on the tree commission's April meeting agenda for discussion and suggest a representative of PGM properties be present.
I'll see to it that that happens, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And the last item is a redo for correcting procedural errors. The recommendation for approval, which is a redundant three times now, recommendation of approval of the tree bank money funds for the Bowie Lake Road street scape as allowed by the ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Do first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you again for your patience. Moving on, discuss and or take action on timing of flashing traffic signals. Chief Harris?
Yes, a couple of months ago, Commissioner Sutton brought up about the red lights on Highway one hundred and having them flash. Keith had got a price. It's about a hundred dollars per light, and I just need approval on doing it and setting a time. Recommendation would be like eleven till five.
Move to approve.
Second.
The first and second and in discussion, I'll bring your attention to when we first got the Cox Pike light. We had this discussion about what would be a good time, and I thought the lights did them automatically.
No.
Okay, so that kind of did not take place.
Correct.
Okay, I agree with the motion. Any other discussion?
Chief, we discussed some months ago about the, that they're, evidently they're set on a timer right now, and that's not working for all of the time, and we have the capability of them working off the weight of the vehicle. Did you ever get any information?
I believe the same guy that will come out can check that, yes.
I mean, we, we, we paid for that, and I think we need to be utilizing that function, that it should not stop flowing traffic when there's no reason to, and it does that continually all day at all three lights. So if you could, if you could get us that and-
If I can make a comment, I think one of Cox Pike are working pretty good, in my opinion. The one down in front of Publix does not. I mean, it holds you forever down there. The one on Cox Pike, there was something coming off of Cox Pike. I've timed it. It's no more than ten seconds after the last car leaves, so it's in pretty good shape as far as timing goes on that one.
Just a, just a question of clarification. Many of the lights between here, Highway ninety-six and White Bridge Road in Nashville on one hundred are from, they flash from ten to six. Why would you recommend eleven to five in our city with much less population?
We could do ten, well, five o'clock, I asked my midnight guys, and they said traffic starts coming out, plus our school buses start coming out, and it helps school buses get out at Chester and get turned without the traffic. It's not a lot of traffic, but we do have traffic.
Well, and then also with the commuters, I mean, it goes both ways. If it doesn't interfere with the, I guess, the school traffic, you're saying the bus drivers like the flashing lights, or they don't?
I've not talked to the bus driver. I just said the buses are out.
The buses are out. I thought maybe you were certain.
We can do, if y'all recommend, if y'all say-
No, I'm fine. I like what you said.
I just wanted your opinion because if it, if ten to six works for Nashville, I can't imagine it not working for us, when they've got much higher population.
At Franklin, set on the same line. You go into Franklin, they don't kick over the six.
I'll amend the motion for ten to six.
Second.
First and second, discussion?
I still think it's too early. I don't know why, just because Nashville, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think it's more fitting, like Curfew's eleven for the, you know, kids. I still would like them to have to respect the lights. I don't know. Eleven to six sounds fine to me, but whatever the majority of the board.
Motion's eleven to five.
Eleven to five.
The original motion-
Eleven to five, yep.
We have the amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Original motion is from eleven to five. Any other discussion?
Would it be appropriate to make an amendment to go from eleven to six?
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
I'd like to make that amendment, that motion.
Second.
Even after the recommendation from the police and the police force that says five?
I've been out there at six o'clock in the morning too many times. I know that there's not that much traffic coming off these side streets.
Absolutely.
To where they don't have a break. I mean, I go to work that time of morning.
I'll go ahead and speak to the fact of Veterans Day last year, when I was on the way to the hospital to have my hip replacement done, I sat at the red light here for four minutes at Publix for no reason. Not a single car was on the road at all whatsoever, none. Now, granted, I still had plenty of time to get there, but for no reason, we're holding people up.
We have an amended-
There was traffic rush coming through here at six o'clock in the morning.
And if, if the, if Nashville can do this from ten to six with three quarters of a million people, I can't imagine us holding these people up out here.
We have an amended motion and a second of eleven to six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The original motion of eleven to five is negated. Eleven to six is the direction of the board.
Move to five.
Thank you for your time. All right, I was deferred. We're at eight J. Discuss and or take action on correcting vote era from appointment of planning commission. And the city attorney has advised that the December nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen appointments for the two planning commission seats need to be redone to, for correct procedural errors, and I will entertain a motion to repeal the December nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen appointments of Brandon Butler and Tim Mangram.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We currently have two opens, oh, any opposed?
Nay. I don't think it's necessary in that way of a motion.
We have two open, we have two open seats to the Fairview Planning Commission with terms expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, and June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. I'll open the floor for nominations. I'd like to nominate Mr. Brandon Butler. Other nominations?
Mr. Tim Mangram.
Any other nominations?
Who all, who did we appoint? What's the names? No, I know all the applications, but what two seats did we just repeal that we want to refill?
Mr. Mangram and Mr. Butler seats, the two that are in nomination.
Okay, and nobody else came, right? Okay, we're good. It's ten o'clock, ten-ten, guys. Sorry, trying to stay along.
We have two nominations on the floor. Is there any other nominations? Nomination cease. We have two nominations and two seats.
Move to elect both members by acclamation.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? This does put in compliance for the Opens Meeting Act. Item K is discuss and or take action on resolution number O2-14, a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment. You can go ahead and read, sorry.
On changing the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee located on Old Nashville Road owned by Timothy R. Mangrum and wife Jessica Mangrum is shown on Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Road Map 42, parcel 06512, 1.03 acres from RM 12 to RS 10, this resolution sets the public hearing for March 20, 2014 at 7:00 PM, Fairview, Tennessee City Hall. Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number L, discuss and take action on resolution number O3-14.
It's a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the changing of the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee located on Horn Tavern Road owned by Walter C. Totti and wife Beverly D. Totti, as shown on the Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Road Map 22, parcel 133, 8.37 acres from R40 to R20, this resolution sets a public hearing for March 20, 2014 at 7:00 PM, Fairview, Tennessee City Hall. Move for approval.
Second.
The record to show that I will not be participating, sorry I said that early, but I also want to highlight, and I missed it in the agenda, but there's a typo there, and it says located on Old Nashville Road. Did the resolution printed correctly?
I read Horn Tavern, I hope, because that is what is written on mine, did I read?
No, you read correctly, the agenda is incorrect, I just wanted to highlight that.
Right. Does the actual resolution say Horn Tavern?
The resolution does say Horn Tavern, so that should be right, correct, Larry, everything's fine.
Yes, you just need to point out that there was a typo in your answer for the Horn Tavern Road, and that's what's on the resolution.
Resolution is correct.
Okay, and I want to, if I may, please be patient, on J, I would like to revisit because we did not assign which seat is assigned to which commissioner. We have the two accepted nominations of Tim Mangrum and Brandon Butler, and I would like to ask, how do I go back to do the dates?
How were they assigned before?
Just assign them to the ones that they were, that they were placed for, because they were, I believe their appointments to fill on expired terms, right?
Yes.
So they would go back to the, to the ones.
Revert to the same seat.
Right.
But we did not, Brandon, are you clear when your term expires?
Yes, ma'am, it's posted on the line.
Mr. Mangrum, are you clear when your term expires?
No, ma'am, 2016.
Okay.
Welcome back.
So we have, just for clarification, we have Mr. Brandon Butler, that is taking the vacant seat expiring 6/30/2014, and Mr. Tim Mangrum, the vacant seat expiring 6/30/2016. Is everybody clear with that?
Okay.
I failed to mention that, I apologize, but just wanted everyone clear of the times. And the last, last item is M.
Should we vote on Horn Tavern?
No.
Move to vote on item L.
Stuart.
We have a motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Can she do the motion in a second?
I've just, no.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, again, thank you for your patience at 10:10. The next item is the appointment, at the time of the appointment of the interim city manager that was done on ballot, and it was not read aloud, and it was not in accordance, it was a procedural error, not in accordance to the Open Meeting Act, and I would like to entertain a motion to repeal that appointment of interim city manager.
Is this recommended by the attorney?
Can we just say who we voted for?
It just needs to be in the public record.
No, it would have to be, the only thing that couldn't have been cured on it was, you can use, you can use written ballots, but they have to be signed.
Right.
They were not signed, so what we need to do is rescind that action, and then make the nomination again, have a roll call vote.
Where does the, where does the state law come in on the 60-day rule?
If it had been challenged within 60 days and writ of certiorari, the time is expired to do that, but for purposes.
We're doing it for housecleaning.
Right, it's housecleaning.
But since it's not, since it wasn't challenged within 60 days, it was official.
Well, to my knowledge, it hasn't been challenged in the 60 days as long since past, but what I will also do in the, since Mr. Hall was appointed as the new city manager, I will have a provision before and placed in his contract that the board acknowledges and ratifies any actions he took in the course and furtherance of his job.
Okay.
I would have done that anyway, because it was an interim job going from interim to permanent, and that needs to be ratified, as long as those actions were taken in furtherance of his job and in the course of his normal employment. That's just to protect him and the city.
Move to resent.
Second.
First and second duly noted, any discussion?
You're gonna have to tell me, because I, it is 10:15, and I do not remember the guy's name that I voted for, but he was the gentleman that was the city manager.
Paul Boyer.
What is it?
Paul Boyer.
Boyer, okay. Okay.
I actually have the ballots here.
Oh, good.
From the meeting, if it's, everybody's fine, I can read them or however y'all want to do it.
You need.
Let's do the rescind and finish where we are now, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And to just make for the Open Records Act, I'd like to do roll call. Commissioner Sutton?
Somebody has to nominate it for interim city manager.
I nominate Wayne Hall for interim city manager.
Roll call, Mr. Commissioner Sutton?
Hall.
Commissioner Johnson? Vice Mayor Johnson? Commissioner Bussell?
Hall.
Okay, so y'all have got me a little confused here, do I say nay because, and nominate the guy? Because if it's roll, okay, but Boyer, but the way it's being done, I don't recall us, I'm just gonna go with a flow, and y'all tell me later.
Well, we're just, we're letting the public know how we voted that night.
Right. Yeah, but, okay.
It doesn't change anything.
No, I didn't think it did. Okay, just making sure that we're doing it right.
Levorn, if there be any other discussion, we have a roll call vote that has now been put into the public record and have corrected any procedural errors that were taken place.
That is correct, and it's not, it's not subject to a challenge because it's been more than 60 days, but we want to, we want to be in step with the public records.
And if I could just add to that, because the total count wasn't read before, if it's okay, Wayne Hall got three votes, Don Levorn got one vote, and Paul Boyer got one vote, just for the total rec, for the record.
And just for clarification, if, and I thought the worst sign, but if the ballots had been signed, we could have just, they would have been part of the record, you could just read the, who voted for who, and it would have cured it, but since they were not, the only way we could cure it is go back and rescind and read.
I hope this clears up the transparency part of it.
Well, and I have a concern about this.
We're gonna go into discussion, and then we'll, that you discuss, city manager, items for discussion? We're done with the agenda.
It had to do with.
We have the E added item.
In, discuss and take action on E citation bid for Sutton.
Mark, you can come back some other time.
Yeah, really.
Goodness.
Thank you.
I don't know who did this, this agenda this long, come on, we want to hear it. It's a good way, we'll pass anything now.
I believe you were given some information late yesterday on the E citation system that we put out to bid back in January. This was part of the Governor's Highway Safety Grant Project that we've been active with for about seven years now. This system is simply designed to reduce error in ticket writing. It also helps calculate better statistics as far as where our tickets are written, who they're written by, and who they're written to. It's an electronic system, it actually speeds up the process on a traffic stop, and it helps us collect better data. It's 100% funded by the grant, which is a reimbursement grant that we've, we were awarded back in October, and so I'm asking you to approve the bid information that you received from the recorder.
Move to approve.
Second. First and second in discussion, my only question, and because you said something, it might not, but are these on traffic lights, or are these on the police cars?
No, ma'am, I know there was some, some social media information put out, this has nothing to do with traffic lights, these are handheld items that the traffic officers will have in their vehicles, and when they make the traffic stop and decide to issue the citation, it's done on electronic measure. In other words, it's filled out, and it's signed by the, the lawbreaker, and once they come back to the police department, it's entered into a computer, it's a computerized ticket system is all it is.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, I didn't mean to skip you, but at the bottom, now we're ready, city manager, Hall?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners, I'm gonna try to go down this as quick as possible. We have 100% of the employees in the city CPR certified.
Yay.
That's awful good, you know, so I'm tickled to death over that. Roy Russell, Brian Bussell, and myself will be proactive in risk management policies for the city. This is from the TML meeting we went to the other day. As of the last few weeks, we have three certifications that allows us to sign off on federal and state grants, one of those being Title VI, Brandy Johnson is qualified for that. John Bledsoe and Todd Bratcher have qualified for the right-of-way acquisitions and the grant phases that we have to go through. Tom Dart just finished a municipal budgeting certification, and I think, how many more you got to go through, Tom?
Nine.
Nine more. So I think he's gonna be very busy, along with the budget.
Yeah.
And tonight, I would like to thank everyone here, this has bestowed a great honor on me, and I'll do everything in my power to make sure that y'all are not disappointed. I thank you very much.
Okay, city manager or staff, what staff this evening?
I just want to thank my street department, Parks Department for taking on the storm. And Ellen has mentioned that we, in the park alone, we've taken down approximately 300 trees, and they're still working. Hopefully, we'll have the trails back open, or the, should say the park, by Saturday. We do have a voluntary group coming out, I believe it was from 9 to 11, to get the smaller debris off the trail system. I really want to thank the Public Works Department, because we put in some long hours and still got some more to go, and I'm asking the public if they will get their brush, and the butt cut ends to the road for us, it's gonna take a while to get every brush out there, but we will do it, we will be working some, we'll pick up the bigger stuff, too, when we go through.
Just have four man, four inch?
Yeah, that'll be able to go through the chipper, but we'll take the backhoe to get the bigger stuff and put it on the new dump truck that we have. We will be working some Saturdays, alternating, so not the same crew is actually working on that, and we are renting a chipper to help us out in this situation, and that was approved by the two money men.
Thank you, any other staff comments this evening?
The police department took 636 calls last month, but we only had 18 non-injury accidents and four injury accidents, so our accidents went down. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Short and sweet, like it.
Undelayed.
Uh-oh.
No, you can go on, you know I'm a lot over here.
We answered 74 calls during the month, there was only six storm-related, so we got off pretty easy in the fire department. We had other calls, but they weren't related to the storm, of course. I will take my hat off to the representative from Rosenbauer that flew in, he's flying back out tomorrow morning, for taking the entire responsibility for the truck being late. Weather has held them up, and I've been checking, they send us pictures, email us pictures of the truck every week, but one of the problems that he said he had was, was he didn't have a siren to put in there, because we had specified a certain siren, and the siren was on back orders. So I called the siren company, and by God, they're on back order, waiting on parts because of the weather. They can't even put the cab together, because they're waiting on the siren, and they can button the whole thing up. And the other issue they're dealing with is propane is being rationed now in the north only to residences, and they have people who are closing their businesses because they don't get heat. So where we're used to having snow, we're back in business the next day, they're out of business for a week. So he could have made excuses, he didn't, he took the brunt of it, it's not entirely his fault, but now we have a delivery date. In summary, ending my presentation, we changed our clocks this Sunday, so altogether, 1, 2, 3, when you change your clocks, you can change your batteries.
Hopefully, the last time on the clocks.
Yeah, I really thought change.
Spring forward, thank you. Other staff comments, yes, sir?
Our report on the Building Codes Department, we had 29 inspections in the Codes Department. In the electrical permits, we had 30, we had six service orders and three building permits. The building permits amounted to $139,608. In the Compliance Department, we had 10 violations and only one citation, so that's what the report is from the Codes Department.
Thank you. Any other staff this evening? Communication from the Commissioners, Commissioner Bussell?
Forgot the city attorney.
City Attorney. I knew you talked, so I was scared.
Thank you, no, I've only got three things, and I'll make it real quick. I will not be in the office in the morning, and I'd like to request, Ms. Brandy, if she would, to forward to each one of the Commissioners the information that I sent her this afternoon relative to item I, which was policies and procedures, and I would request that, it's in Word format, that anyone who has any changes, and I'm sure you probably will, this is a suggested procedure, you're not gonna hurt my feelings, say, I want to take this out, if you would, if you have some time, anything you want to add or take away, please note it on there and email it to me, and I'll get it in to the policies and procedures, that the last one, the one you'll be getting, this is the one you've got the copy of tonight, but it's a lot easier to edit those online than it is something else. To clear up something for my good friend Commissioner Carroll, all cities receive adequate facilities tax money from the, from the state, it's not something that the counties do out of goodness of their heart.
But we have a higher, there's something, go ahead, I'm sorry, I want to.
It's dictated by statute.
Okay.
Our sales tax is a little bit higher, because we had a sales tax increase several years ago, and it's a good thing, because you probably couldn't do it now, but all cities in Tennessee have that, it's up to them as to what they do with it. The cities have a little bit more latitude than the counties do, the counties are locked in, so it can only be for schools. Cities are allowed to do, to do some things other than schools, if it's for a public purpose, i.e. support the library, that type thing, but I just wanted to clarify that up for you. The last thing that I have, and I know the hour's late, but I would be very remiss if I don't mention this, and I want to be sure and do that, I want to personally congratulate Mr. Hall on his appointment, I've worked with him for years, don't foresee that I'll have any problem, it'll be a pleasure to work with him in the future, and I just wanted to publicly congratulate him while I had a chance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, I will like to say, if next time, because I was in that conversation, feel free to jump in and tell, because I was searching for the answer, but what I was recalling was the higher sales tax amount, there's two cities that have that, and so just to keep me from taking the conversation in the wrong direction, please feel free to jump in if you have knowledge.
Just let me add something to that, it's perfectly, it was perfectly legal, it's within the framework of the sales tax, but there's some bills up that's gonna alter some. but there's some bills up that's gonna alter some of those things. Where we'll be after they get finished, I don't know. But I mean, it's not, it wouldn't lower what you've already got. But it's like the hall income tax thing that's going to go away. There's several cities that have no commercial, and I'm not trying to run their business, but they have basically no commercial, and they get a lot of their money from the hall income tax.
But yeah, but what I was saying is, Phil, when I was questioning what cities, I, I was confused with the matter, and I was talking, now that you pointed that out, the higher, there's two Williamson County cities that have the higher sales tax. So anyway, if you ever catch, I'm just giving you total permission, 'cause I was searching for somebody to correct me, and you have that knowledge, please share it with me. Thank you. Commissioner Bussell?
Thank you, mayor. I have a couple of things. Ms. Johnson, would you please see on the 320 agenda that I have two items? One would be the welcome signs lighting. The second one would be, and both of them will be discussed and/or take action, and that will be on the history village. The second one will be on the history village, we didn't even get to those tonight. I did this earlier at the start of the workshop, I'll be brief and not repeat the whole thing, but during one of the points I was trying to make on Tuesday's workshop, I used the former city manager, Mr. Hyatt, as an example. I may have left some people with the impression I thought Andrew was not a good city manager. That couldn't be further from the truth. I thought Andrew was an excellent city manager, and I thought he accomplished a lot of things while he was here. And a lot of the good things that we've got going on, he had a hand in. So I meant no disrespect in what I said, and regret having referenced him at all, and my apologies to him and his wife and his children, who are still here. He's, I guess he had to leave, but Commissioner Johnson already said this, but I do endorse Mr. Humber as a potential candidate for the codes director's job. I think if we could land him, we would be proud to have him here. I think he'd do a great job. And then, we didn't really go around, but I, I, and I talked a lot on Tuesday, so most of this may be a repeat, but I kinda wanted to summarize why I voted for Mr. Hall. And I did put a lot of time into this, more so, I guess, than any other decision that I've made since I retired, for sure. But it was, it really did boil down to some buy-ins to our community, and I, and I felt that Mr. Hall was, was the person I wanted. So if I could just read these off real quick, and then I will be done. I believe that Wayne is an excellent manager, and he has above-average people skills. I believe that his lack of a higher education did not hamper his abilities, and he learned a lot managing his business, and he applies the good side of that. And I think the things that didn't work out for him, he'll stay away from those as our city manager. I believe that he has much to learn about the current automation out there, but I stand by what I said, and, and what I did here, was that if somebody gives him a good idea, and he has lots of bright employees, some from a different generation working for him, that do understand automation, that I believe he's already demonstrated that he, he will run with a good idea and will work to implement it. I believe over the last 90 days or so, he's demonstrated his capabilities. And part of that is that he's demonstrated his loyalty to the city. And he's done what he thought was good for the city, regardless of how he thought it would impact him in the vote tonight. And that speaks to me, again, I wanna repeat, that speaks to me of high character. And that is always, high character and integrity is always the first thing you look for in your leader. I believe that the vision of our city, and I heard this a lot and read it a lot, quite frankly, I believe that, that there may be a misunderstanding about who's responsible for the vision of our city. And I think it's the five of us up here that's responsible for the vision. I think the city manager is responsible for execution. And, and so I, I again believe that Mr. Hall has those, is capable and willing to implement what instructions we give him. But I, I think if I got anything out of some of the feedback that I've read and heard, I think probably we need to look at ourselves a little bit and tighten up our, our, maybe not our vision, but tighten up how we communicate our vision, so that it's pretty clear. And then, and then I believe, as a person, that Mr. Hall's character is above reproach, his humility is genuine, and he is dedication to service our citizens is without question. And so when it all boiled down to it, you can, you can do matrix charts, you can hold interviews, you can, you can do background checks, you can do everything. When it all boils down to it, what I believe we were elected to do was to assess all the things and then collectively select the person that we thought would do the best in that job. And every time I spun it, it came up Wayne Hall. So I hope you take it. I assume you're gonna take it. And I thank you for applying, and I thank the other people for applying too. Because I, I believe that we got a better set of candidates this time around than in some total last time around. I don't want Mr. Hyatt to think that I'm talking about him again, I'm not. But the, the long and short of it is that, that I think that Mr. Browton helped us, but I also think that the reputation to the city of Fairview helped us. And that, that's kinda shared by the citizens, shared by the people that we've had in charge. And maybe it's a little self-serving, but maybe we can take a little credit for that up here too. So even when it looks dysfunctional, I think we're pretty functional. And I think we came up with the right person. And so congratulations to Mr. Hall, it was my pleasure to go for you, sir. Thank you, mayor.
Commissioner Carroll? Oh yes, hold on. I have a lot to say, I'm gonna try to sum it up and not get way too off topics, but I really do have a few things that I would like to address. First of all, I wanna make clarification that I was the one that requested that the city manager remove the workshop from the YouTube. And the reason I requested that was because I, there was a lot of things. We had never taped and televised a workshop before. And since it was a sensitive matter that we were discussing, as far as, I'm all for transparency, but I was concerned, and it didn't hit me till the next morning, 'cause when it was brought up, I questioned it that night, but I was like, you know, I understood it was for transparency. You know, we're all on this theme now, and I, I support this. But that night, late that night, it just dawned on me, how would I feel if somebody took a YouTube tape of a workshop discussing about my job qualifications, or, you know, what they learned in the interview or in this workshop? And it was there for the rest of time for somebody to pull up and use against me in future endeavors? So, you know, I just kinda did not know where we were putting ourself. Was it a legal liability? Could they come back? If not, I was concerned about, just was it professional? You know, it's one thing, they knew the interviews were gonna be televised, I hope. But we did no waiver, you know, this discussion of this workshop. It's not common practice for workshops to be televised. We did the legal liability of what we're supposed to. We posted that we're having a workshop, and we put it in the paper. We opened it to the public, and we even televised it for Channel 19. If you wanna DVR'd it, you could've. I know that none of this was said before time, but we, we've never been asked to televise a workshop. So there was a lot of confusion, and my decision was to protect the city. And I know it's confusing to a lot of times, but I tried to stop it before it was posted. I actually called Mr. Hall a little bit after eight in the morning, and I said, "Please, will you get a legal opinion?" And I was gonna get the legal opinion before I addressed the other commissioners about it. Asked for him to get some kind of legal opinion from Larry and what he thought. He was unable to get ahold of Larry. In the meantime, I went onto Facebook and saw the link posted. I called back to Mr. Hall, and I asked Mr. Hall, "Can you pull it till we get a legal opinion?" And he said, "Yes." I then called, and sorry, Mr. Sutton, or Commissioner Sutton, I apologize for that online today. I was not, 'cause his opinion was not valued. But I do have a small window in between my full-time job that I can conduct city business. And I did call the commissioners, and I ran out of time. But I already had a consensus that I had support for removing it while it was being looked into. Now, it was reported back that there's not a legal obligation or liability to the city. Is more of us, as whether or not, as board of commissioners, whether we view that as a professional practice? So I would like to see this put on the next agenda to discuss whether or not that meeting can be released back on YouTube. But we need to consider YouTube is forever. That 20 years ago, somebody can go somewhere, and that discussion, that should've been, we, if we wanted them here, we would've invited them. And I'm not so sure they expected it to be put all over the world wide web. So we really need to take that in consideration and know that, yes, we wanna be transparent. Yes, tonight, it was televised again, nobody stopped it, it was on Channel 19. We wanna make it convenient for the citizens to be able to sit at home. And maybe that we should consider, yeah, let's televise the workshops, that that's something the board. But I think we need to take a really long look on what we're doing to try to say we're transparent, because when we sit in a workshop, that is our chance to speak freely on whatever city business is in front of us, is a relaxed chance. Any other time, we're televised and we're gonna be scrutinized. Now, please scrutinize us in workshops. I know a lot of y'all are out here, you attend a lot of workshops, and you are able to pass it on to, through internet or other means, some of the discussions for the people that can't come. I'm all for that, I, I am. I think it's great that you can use that tool of social media and websites to your advantage. But the workshops gives us a chance. And I'm not so sure everybody said 100% what they would've if it wasn't televised. And then you wonder why we didn't pick your candidate, why we didn't pick the one you want. And if you, if it wasn't televised, maybe I could've said some things in a different light. Now granted, we all know, if you, if the, from the workshop, that I said a lot. And I do wanna clarify a few things from the workshop, 'cause there's people here from the audience, and I'm so sorry, guys, I know it's late. But I do wanna clarify, when I referred to the city manager, or interim city manager Hall, I referred back to the, one of the reasons why Wayne Hall has really impressed me. And it, one of the things I spoke of was his character. And I went back to the interim appointment. And I mentioned that I felt like it was a railroad situation, and that at that time, I admitted that I didn't vote for the man. I called him the day of to seek what I wanted, and I picked that guy not from here. Well, that offended some people, because, but funny is, I'm not from here. So I came into the city and I loved it, and I have invested in it, and I think I'm from here. I may not have been born and raised, but I'm from here. So, but in the long story short, Mr. Hall, and this'll be a great segue to this, I was so glad that the three commissioners that voted you in for the position did, because it gave me a chance to see your capabilities. I knew for years what kind of man you were, what kind of character you were, and had a lot of respect for you from watching you as a board of commissioner and planning commissioner, and serving on the planning commission. I, if you recall, called you that day and talked about, I didn't know what I was gonna do, and explained kinda my thought process. And you pretty much gave me permission to do whatever I thought was the right thing, and you wouldn't hold it against me. I am so thankful for your willingness to serve our community. I appreciate your kind heart to tell me that's okay, that you want me, you know I'll make the right decision. And whether you watched the workshop or not, that was said, and I stick by it. Some of the community members are gonna be really disappointed, 'cause they looked at the education, and they looked at how we did our job description and MTS. But MTS did sit down and ask different importance, and way we worded it, it was to seek, you know, top applicants. I don't regret that, but I know it was confusing to a lot of people. I do not regret my vote for Mr. Hall tonight. I did take in consideration everything everybody said, and I know that all candidates offered so much. And I even said in workshop, "If we could roll them all up into one, you know, wouldn't that be great?" But Mr. Hall, I am, am so glad you're here, and I thank y'all, my fellow commissioners, even though I felt, felt like it was a railroad, and I tried to slow it down. I think you're right, we got the best candidate. And I did not go in with the MTS process to waste a tax dollar. I did not know who I was gonna vote for. I went in with an open mind. I went to, went through the interview process, and I'm glad I did, because now Mr. Hall can sit here with pride, knowing that over the majority wanted him here. So I am so thankful it happened, and I'm so thankful we got to meet these highly experienced candidates. And I'm sorry, and that's all I have to say. Thank you. Commissioner Sutton?
I'll briefly touch on that, 'cause Wayne knows how I feel about him. In 2008, when I ran for the first time for this office right here, Wayne Hall was running against me. I can only tell you that I was dealt with in that process with nothing but respect from Wayne Hall. He has become a mentor of mine since that time. I totally respect him. And when it was obvious to me that we were gonna have to find at least an interim city manager, this was even prior to when Andrew left, because the word was out that he was doing interviews and different things like that. I racked my brain to try to think of someone that I could trust, someone that I respected enough to do the right thing and not go hog-wild in an interim point of that. And I don't mind telling you now, it didn't bother me at all, I told you then. I actually called Wayne Hall and asked him if he was, would, would consider doing it. And without a blink, he said yes. He has all the qualities that I look for in somebody like this. And we talk about education, education's a great thing. We, we talked about some young people today. Years ago, education was based on apprenticeship, not necessarily book learning or education, or higher education, or colleges, it was based on apprenticeship and the idea of doing it. And he has more time, I think, than anybody up here on the planning commission, and other than Vice Mayor Johnson, more time on the board of commissioners. So he knows the business of this city. And I'll just, I'll cut it short, 'cause I know we're tired. I respect Wayne, I expect he'll do the right thing. And that's really all I gotta say, I'm glad to have you, that's it. Now, moving on, it, this is part of his thing too. I complained several weeks ago about additional trash in the city, and that there were several locations that had removed trash cans from outside the drive-thru windows. And those locations, one of them was McDonald's, one of them was Hickory Home Barbecue, they didn't have... They didn't have one, period. Help me out, Wayne.
Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts and Backyard Burger. And Sonic does have access to the drive-thru, once people drive up, or they have places to throw the trash. So, what I asked him to do, I was pretty upset about, because immediately after McDonald's took theirs away, you started seeing trash all over the place. People thought the trash can was still there, because they put it right in the same spot every morning. But I asked him to, and he wrote them all a letter, asking them, letting them know that we'd seen an increase in trash, and part of it was due from the drive-thru windows and not having receptacles available to the people who were driving through. And I'm one of those. I go every morning, I get a large coffee, four cream, senior coffee, three creams, and you what? So, I seen that, and I asked him to write him a letter. Actually, I was wanting to do it just in ordinance. I was so upset with the large amount of trash that I was starting to say, just doing ours, make it a law. They got to put one out there. And with the wiser person, he said, well, let's just write them a real nice letter and ask them real nice. And I said, well, all right, we'll try it, and I'll be out there taking pictures of the trash, too, because they just really upset me. We've been, Beverly and I, we've been on too many clean sweeps and stuff, cold in the mornings and everything else to pick up trash, and the city's doing a great job to keep it going. He did send him a letter, and tonight, I've had people call me, tell me they won't go back. I'm happy to report, there is a trash can back at McDonald's where it has been, and this was done by Mr. Hall writing the nice letter and asking for their cooperation, and they have decided to cooperate with us, and I really appreciate that, and just to let McDonald's know, I appreciate their cooperation, and y'all can go back and get your Big Macs now. So, the trash can issue is there. The last thing I have on my mind, and that I want to share with everybody, is a couple of days ago, the, sorry to interrupt me, if I speak out of turn, because I'm, it's way past my bit there. The Board of Election?
The Election Commission.
The Election Commission, that's the same thing. The Election Commission chose to not have satellite early voting, which means on April the 16th, when the early voting starts, you will have to go to Franklin in order to early vote. Not here, not Thompson Station, not Knoxville, not the part of the Spring Hill, not anywhere. You will have to go to the city of Franklin to have early voting. Other than that, you will only have one day to vote, and that's May the 6th. Everybody that I've talked to, many elected officials, thinks that's horrible. And what I'd like for you to do, if you oppose that thought, or don't like the idea of not having any time to vote here locally, and let me back up a little bit, because I think it really hurts the handicapped people, the elderly people, the people that can't drive up there, the people that on Election Day, which is usually when you only have one day, there's long lines to stand in, people 65, 70, 75, 80 years old, they don't want to stand in line, so in essence, what they're going to do is not vote.
Bad weather.
Bad weather. They're not standing, they're not going to vote. And what I've asked them to do is at least give us three days, a Thursday, Friday, and a Saturday, at a satellite location, all of them, not just here. I'm not speaking for just for Fairview, but everywhere. People should have that opportunity to vote, and it's an opportunity to be able to stay close at home where you can't, don't have transportation, somebody else can give you the transportation. So, if anybody wants to write this number down, it's 790-5711. I'll repeat it again, 790-5711. Feel free to call them and let them know that you do not support their decision to only have it in Franklin. This also implies people that work in Nashville, people work somewhere else, you know, they've got to, to vote early, they've got to get up there and get it done. As it stands now, if you work and you want to vote locally, you've only got four hours to do it in, because the polls are open seven to seven, you take 12, you subtract your eight hours of working, not counting your travel time, you've got four hours to go vote. And so, if you object to that, please let them know. Hopefully, we can sway them, and they can open up at least a few days in every location to give everybody time and the opportunity to vote, because I think it's terrible. I think that it's going to cause, I'm going to say this, and I'm going to shut up. The last time we had this same election, we had a flood, we had 7% of the total population that could vote, voted, 7% decided who's going to run your county, who's going to be the positions that were there, that were elected, and that's pitiful. I'm sorry to say, we've got a bigger responsibility to the men and women that fought and died for our country, give us that right, than to sit at home and not do anything, let somebody else make that decision for us. Whether you vote for me or vote for anybody else, I don't, that's not the point. The point is, you need to go vote, you need to have the opportunity and the right, and it shouldn't be taken away from you by a small group of people. They're good people, they've been doing it for a long time, but I think they just misled. So, 790-5711, call them and voice your opinion, and just hopefully, we can get something changed. Thank you for everybody, all the hard work everybody does on the board and everything else. Especially to the people out there tonight, because you haven't seen us here this time in a long time. Lee, congratulations, you're the only politician left. I'll give you another shout-out. So, you know, it's, you're out here because you care. You wouldn't be here if you didn't care. So, I appreciate you, your input on everything.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Johnson.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. 140 days ago, I was the dummy that Commissioner Carroll was thanking a minute ago.
I'm sorry.
She didn't call me a dummy. I'm calling myself a dummy, but Commissioner Sutton explained that when he heard of the departure, upcoming departure of our former city manager, he contacted Mr. Hall. I made the motion that night to hire him, and I've had so much public scrutiny for that, and I'm glad I did it, and especially after Commissioner Carroll thanking us for doing it. And I just started doing some calculating, and Alan had said it earlier, 90 days, it's been 140 days today.
Wow.
That's how time flies, and you've done a tremendous job. One other thing I would like to clear up, that Patty was touching on, is the social media thing. There were people on there today saying that we had a closed-door meeting, that we went in a room and we voted to pull that thing off the Internet. People, that is absurd. Why would anybody put that in print and put that on there? There's no, that didn't happen, that doesn't happen. Why go to that and just make those false accusations? You can't, I mean, it's there. It's just like putting the video on there. Somebody can pull that off, and they've got the whole thing recorded, and they can put it back up later, but just be careful, everyone, and that's myself. Once you write something, it's hard to take it back. I made some mistakes this week on Facebook and making some errors, and I want to apologize to David Mayberry. He doesn't live in the city anymore, and he's probably not going to hear this. Maybe he'll, word will get to him, but I made the comment that Brandy was the first person to hold the city recorder job that had a bachelor's degree. Brandy is the first one hired to be the city recorder that has a bachelor's degree. He was already our CFO at the time, and Shirley Forehand asked him to take double duty, and that slipped my mind, because I went back, every woman I could think that ever held that job, and it never crossed my mind about him having that job. So, I owe him an apology for saying that.
You should have stopped when you were here. You just called him a woman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, David. The last thing I have, I want to add this to the agenda, and I know I've told many people this, I think we can solve a lot of our voting issues in the future. The county, and I'm sure many cities and other counties across the state, have an electronic system, and what it does is it puts a button, three buttons actually, in front of each and every one of us, a yay button, a nay button, and an abstain button, and behind us on our screens, it will record the vote, it follows along with the agenda, and it tells each and every one of you here and at home how we voted. I would like that system to be added to the agenda on the 20th for discussion and/or action, and Mr. Hall, if you could get with the county mayor, whomever he has you, get with, of what a cost would be on that for us to have. I think that's something that we could, would be good for our city. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, the hour is extremely late, one minute to 11, and I will be done in one minute. But first of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hall, look forward to working with you in the future. Thank the commission for the time that was spent in deliberation, and I'd like to highlight at this time, the Public Works employees and director, the fire chief, and the police chief, and their force. We have been through a interesting storm, not as much as the north, but I believe that everyone has given above and beyond, and the Public Works working on the ice and the roads and the trees. I just want to say thank you to not only the Public Works, but also the enforcement that I know you are out and working and participating, and that, again, shows your great work in keeping the team together, and I do thank you for that. Will there be any other comments or discussion this evening? I make a, look for a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
First and second, all those in favor?
Right now.
Good evening.